Good morning, I'd like to call the order, the Sweetwater County Board of County Commissioners meeting this Tuesday, July 6th, 2021. And at this time, I would like to notify that we do have a quorum present. One Commissioner Jeff Smith is excused. Please stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. First order of business is approval of our agenda. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Tolman.
I would like to add executive session for pre-decisional on Pacific Atlantic Trona EIS.
Okay, pre-decisional.
And also, don't we have a personnel?
Yep, I was about to hit it. Just go ahead and put it on there.
Okay, so, and personnel, anti-personnel issue.
Okay, so we have a pre-decisional Pacific Atlantic?
Pacific Atlantic Trona EIS alternatives.
All right, thank you very much. EIS. Alternative. Okay, and then as well, personnel. Is that correct, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, is there any other amendment to the agenda? With that, Commissioners, what's your pleasure with the agenda with the additional two amendments?
Art, we need a second from?
I'll second. I'll second. Has there been a motion? No, Mary, I would move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Lloyd to accept the agenda with the two amendments. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Tolman. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. Motion carries. Next up is the approval of the minutes from the June 15th, 2020 regular meeting. Commissioners, your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
I'd so move that we approve the minutes from the June 15th meeting of 2021.
You have a motion by Commissioner Lloyd to approve the minutes from the June 15th regular meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane Field. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. Motion carries. Next on our agenda is approval of the minutes from June 16th, 2021 budget hearing, special meeting. Commissioners, your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion by Commissioner Tolman to approve the minutes from the June 17th, 2021 budget hearing, special meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane Field. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. Motion carries. Tab B, acceptance of the bills. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
I'd move that we approve the county vouchers and warrants, approval of bonds, and approval of abates and rebates.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion to approve the bills by Commissioner Lloyd. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Commissioner Tolman. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. Motion carries. Next up is county resident concerns. And at this time, I will open the floor for county resident concerns. And I do believe our clerk does have through email concerns she that she would like to read representing citizens of Sweetwater County, so.
Let's see if I can get all this to work. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
The first email is from D. Moon, just the initial D, M-O-O-N. And it says, "It is outrageous that the State and Board of Commissioners have made extreme budget cuts to social programs serving Sweetwater County residents, and now you are considering a paid, made-up social justice day. We just went through a period of threatening not paying for ambulance services for residents because of budget concerns, and now you turn around and want to throw money toward a small elite class of employees. You have forgotten whom you serve. This only benefits the government employees by getting a day off and being paid for it and probably not celebrating the emancipation of slaves. Were any of them slaves? I don't know what percentage of workers are county employees compared to all working people in Sweetwater County, but I'm sure it is minuscule. They don't need to be rewarded, Mr. Smith, any more than as a government employee having a job that is difficult to be fired from, one in which salaries are too high and benefits that most of working poor will never see. Commissioner Wendling, most people in this county are working for minimum wage and not offered benefits at all. Since you have worked in government most of your life, you may not be aware of this. Just come into Walmart sometime when it is open and folks are working for minimum wage every day of the year, including major holidays, and ask about it. Thank you, Commissioner Tolman, for expressing the reality of most non-social justice hard-working commissioners in Sweetwater County, oh, commoners, in Sweetwater County. We're all saying the same thing. Just because Washington thinks it's a good idea does not mean it's a good idea for Sweetwater County, or Wyoming for that matter. Or are you afraid of cancel culture? Most of our ancestors did not own slaves. If anyone deserves a paid day off, it is the tribes in this area we've assaulted. Please reconsider passing this proclamation, or whatever you are calling it. You are out of touch with reality and the people of Sweetwater County, which you are serving. We will not be getting paid to take off for Juneteenth and will most likely be working that day, the weekend's overnight shifts, Fourth of July, for minimum wage. Meanwhile, government employees will get another day that they will not be available to conduct county business. Serve the regular people of Sweetwater County first. D. Moon." That's the end of that one.
Pardon?
That's, that's the end of that one. Okay, the second public comment is from Chris Blake. Honorable County Commissioners, I was at the courthouse the other day. I did notice a sign, West Interest entrance, that says firearms are prohibited in the building. I can understand no firearms in the courtrooms, which is a separate entrance than the main courthouse. On April 7th, 2020, the Board did pass Resolution 2020-04-CC-02 stating Sweetwater County, Wyoming is a Second Amendment sanctuary county. What law or resolution justifies the sign? I have not seen a resolution passed to ban firearms from the courthouse. Does the sign give false information? Your immediate review of this sign would be appreciated. Sincerely, Chris Blake."
Floor is open for county resident concerns. County resident concerns. Last call. Floor is now closed for county residents concerned. Next up is Commissioner comments and reports. And first up is myself. Commissioners, I'll pass down this, but we did get a card from the 4-H and thanking us for the, from the shooting sports regarding the, I believe it was the, I'll just read it, County Commissioners of Sweetwater County and Mr. Legursky. Thank you all so very much for getting the grant for the 4-H shooting sports. I appreciate it more than you know. You all are awesome. Thanks for all you do. Sincerely, Jailer Hernandez, 4-H shooters. I believe that's in reference to the commission waiving their shooting fees at the shooting range, 4-H kits. So with that, nice thank you. We appreciate it. And I'll pass it on down. Question for the other Commissioners, have you been getting any calls regarding the ad valorem taxes that are coming up, starting the first? I do know that I've got a couple of calls, and I'll reference them to our attorney more closely after our meetings. But those calls are with regard that the way the, the way the ad valorem is written and being processed through that statute, in some common language, it's messy for some of the organizations. But the specific requests I'm getting is to opt out because it's so messy. So I don't know totally what that means, but I will sit with our county attorney's office and take a closer look at these. But if you get any calls along this line from industry regarding the ad valorem, make sure we sit with our, our counsel and let them know because at some point in time, we will get hit for requests based on how that Senate file has been passed regarding industry paying in the ad valorem taxes regarding the catch-up over the 18 months, the way it used to be run. So the other thing is, I have here a, Rocky Mountain Power has sent out a community performance plan request. And as requested, if any of the Commissioners have a item or anything that we could request assistance in working with Rocky Mountain Power, I'll pass it on down. If you do, let me know so we can pass it forward to their representative. It's just working with the communities and, and what their needs are. So let me pass it down, and then you can look at it and see what you think. And the last thing I have is, I'll ask Commissioner Tolman with the CLG, have you received anything from the Western tribes regarding the renewal of membership with them regarding the natural gas line that they're trying to get to the coast for exporting gas? Do you recall?
Nothing, nothing current.
Nothing current, okay, I?
We had something from the tribes, but that would have been last fall.
Now, a year ago, they came to us as a county, as a commission, and Commissioner Johnson had carried that request and that membership to CLG. And I believe CLG paid that, that membership for that year. Now they're, you know, it's a yearly membership that I believe, and Commissioner Lloyd and Mr. Shane Field can verify, but I believe it was one that we supported as a commission and that type of thing. So I'll forward to you the stuff that I received and let you talk with CLG. If CLG chooses not to continue, please let us know so we can get Andrew Brown through Zoom to present to us where they're at, the status of the tribe, I'm stuttering now, I'm sorry, but anyhow, the status of that organization, and present to us to see if we as a commission individually want to continue to work with them. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
All right, I'll forward that stuff to you sometime today. Thank you. Outside of that, I have listened to a few meetings, and like Commissioner Tolman had mentioned, there will be some stuff with Atlantic Soda Pre-Decisional that we'll have in that. And then, but I've missed most of my liaisons due to having surgery last week and that. So I, I will conclude my report if there's any questions for me. Thank you very much. Up next will be Commissioner Smith, who's not here, and then Commissioner Shane Field. Floor is yours.
Good morning, thank you. So, SEDC, Kayla has been very busy as well as the rest of the group. She did get the Grow Home presentation, and will be presenting that to our group as a whole, and then also to the commission later. And then we also attended that Rocky Mountain Power Natrium Terra Power meeting last week, and then had a SEDC meeting after that. As we've discussed and decided upon, a partnership to put together a packet that's going to go out to the decision-makers in regards to the location decision. This is going to look similar to that marketing packets that are typically sent out for site selections, and really showing why they should be looking seriously at Sweetwater County for this. And hold on, I'm going to pull up my email and share. So, we're working on workforce training, housing, available land and properties. We have letters of support that we're working on bringing in. We're working, obviously, with Janessa Travel and Tourism, and also some industry support for Next Gen and SWMP. And then we've also reached out to our healthcare partners throughout the county to, to try to get some information to share with Rocky Mountain Power and Terra Power. The presentation was, it was very well attended, and it was a lot of really good information. So they are going to be coming back next week to be looking at all sites for feasibility at the location. So, and Commissioner Tolman was there as well with me. They did have the opportunity to talk to both the CEO of Rocky Mountain Power and the CEO of Terra Power, and they also talked very highly about a partnership with our community college, in which I think Western is probably going to be key in bringing any industry here. And their partnership with our industries throughout the county has already been extremely strong, and I think will continue to be a key player for us moving forward and diversifying our economy. So that's very exciting. The museum, in June, they had over 350 visitors, and 85% of them made purchases in the gift shop, which was an increase in sales for 225% over last year. Obviously, that was during COVID, but it's still a good increase over the past year. Many travelers have been directed here by the Green River Visitor Center, so that's awesome. Shout out to them as well. The museum completed its new Firearms of the Old West Single Action Revolvers exhibit, which also includes a display of the Sweetwater County Sheriff's Office badges. And as of the first week of July, their Facebook post was describing that exhibit, and it had received over 21,000 views. They also added a Model 1873 Winchester rifle to their cattle ranchers and sheepherders exhibit, and that Facebook post had over 27,000 views. They now have over 3,000 followers on Facebook, and their Facebook reaches up to 372%. They, museum volunteer Emilio Sanchez and public engagement coordinator Aiden Brady staged a special explore history event outside of the museum's interest entrance. They did a demonstration on how muzzle-loading rifles was charged, or were charged, using PVC pipe and coffee as substitutes. The Buffalo Hyde and a historic 1861 Springfield rifle musket were also there on display. Emilio and Aiden also staffed an Oregon Trail-themed booth at the Downtown Street Fair and demonstrated old-fashioned butter churning, which is fun. There were many people who stopped by the table and were treated to some homemade butter on crackers. And then museum curator Amanda Benson conducted the latest on her Protecting the Precious Possessions workshop, and that was at the Broadway Theater in Rock Springs. Her subject was preservation and storage of pop culture collectibles such as vintage baseball cards, comic books, and vinyl records. They've also begun a full schedule of classes and events for the summer, including cast classes on basket weaving, a gold panning event, maps and compasses, and a series of Family Fun Fridays. And then the Vintage Firearms Research Program continues to be popular. Recently, two patrons brought in three Frontier Era Trap Door Springfield rifles that were standard US Army issue during the Indian Wars. One of them turned out to be a scarce experimental carbine model, which was very particularly rare and valuable. So, pretty cool.
Pretty cool.
The events complex is really gearing up right now. They're very busy getting ready for the RV rally and the rodeo and fair that are just around the corner. And I also attended a state broadband task force meeting last week where we were looking at making some adjustments to the ARPA funding and how that will be able to be utilized for broadband infrastructure across the state, and what recommendations we would be pushing towards the governor. So.
Very good.
Any questions?
No, thank you. Good report. Any questions for Commissioner Shane Field? I would just like to thank you, and I know Commissioner Tolman hasn't reported, but she's next. But thank both of you for being at the Rocky Mountain Terra Plant presentation. Well, these are something that's very important to our community. We also, you know, keep in mind, there's going to be more than one, is my understanding. So let's continue to work, and we will, as you, through SEDC and supporting that however we can, and get some assistance from some of the outside people to help us as well. Thank you. Good report. Up next, Commissioner Tolman. Good morning.
Yes, thank you. I've been attending the joint purchasing for janitorial supplies for the cities in the county. Marty Dernovich has been doing quite a bit of extra work preparing that bid, and she did send out the bid award letters on June 30th. So I just want to commend her and her staff for all the extra work they did to try to prepare that, that bid for the janitorial supplies. Coalition of Local Governments, we hosted the last meeting here on June 24th in our Castle Rock Room. Next meeting will be July 22nd, UNA County Conservation District Meeting Room. Eric South was appointed chairman from UNA County Commission. Bob King of Lincoln had resigned as chairman. Tom Noble was appointed or elected to vice chairman, and I'm still Executive Secretary Treasurer of the Coalition Local Governments. Bob Peternell is the Conservation District Representative. Carol Hamilton of UNA County is the Communication Coordinator. So I just wanted to provide an update on that for our board. We're working with the Governor's Office and legislators to receive the Federal Natural Resource Policy Account funding to help fund the work of the Coalition on pre-decisional federal plans and policies and programs. Comments will be upcoming on the royalty rule review and the suspension of oil and gas leasing. Those comments are due August 10th. Waters of the US comments are being prepared through that Coalition on our behalf. So we'll be sending those out to our Commissioners to review before they're submitted. Oh, CLG is trying to schedule a meeting with the governor to discuss southwestern Wyoming issues regarding nuclear power, oil and gas moratorium, coal plant closures, carbon capture, et cetera. On June 29th, I attended the Wyoming Wildlife Task Force meeting. It was a public meeting to receive input on licensing and herd health and private landowner initiatives. So that was very interesting. We had very good attendance. Over 40 people probably attended that meeting. On June 30th, Lauren and I did attend the Rocky Mountain Power Advanced Nuclear Demonstration Project proposal. It is a hopeful, hopeful initiative that will help maybe keep some workers in Wyoming. And I want to thank Dave Martin for trying to cover the issues pro and con in the Green River Star. So that, that's greatly appreciated. The website where you can receive the latest information on this proposal through Rocky Mountain Power and Terra Power is WYADVANCEDENERGY.com. W-Y-A-D-V-A-N-C-E-D-E-N-E-R-G-Y.com. Rocky Mountain Power is preparing their Integrated Resource Plan that has to go before the Public Service Commission in September, and it will include, the Natrium plant will be included in that request before the Public Service Commission. On July 1st, Eric and I attended the, and Dr. Wendling too, I believe you were on the Zoom meeting for the Pre-Decisional Pacific Soda Trona Alternatives Review. And we'll talk about that in Pre-Decisional, some highlights on that. But it's, it's progressing very, very well, and it may coordinate with the closure of the coal plant. The second-phase Jim Bridger is scheduled to be closed 2023. So perhaps our Trona will be ready to take on some miners, I don't know, with some retraining through the college. So we're looking at opportunities to try to keep our economy viable, and it's, it's scary because we are seeing huge reductions in our, in our income in the county. I've been contacted by Beth Callaway of the Governor's Office. They're going to do a call on July 12th, trying to put together the Sublet Mule Deer Migration Corridor Task Force, or I'm not sure what they call the committee, but anyway, they'll be putting a group together to review that sublet migration corridor. So that is all for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Good report. Explain where the sublet corridor, have you familiar with where it's going? Would you share that with?
Yes, the Sublet Migration Mule Deer Corridor starts south of I-80. It comes through our area and heads north up through Big Sandy into Sublet County, on up to the Upper Green.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, good report. Questions for Commissioner Tolman, Commissioners? No questions? We'll move on. Up next is Commissioner Lloyd. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to start by thanking our two citizens, C. Blake and D. Moon, for sending in comments. They're, you know, it's always great to hear from constituents and hear the concepts. And Cindy, I may grab some emails if possible so I can respond back and offer to visit with them and share some information. But I also want to share one of the cool things today. If you're not in, say, if you're not in our room, unless, if you're not David Martin, we have got the chairs set up. So there's plenty of room to come be part of this. And David Martin's still invited. He's just here. But, and we do appreciate it. Man, that sounded a lot worse than it was intended to. Thank golly, David's my friend. Otherwise, power to the paper there. But we, but just the point is, there's a lot of space. And, and we do appreciate when folks are involved and come and listen and visit and check out the agenda and see what's out there that you want to come listen about, listen to, and share your voice. So we appreciate that. With that, not a lot of liaison stuff. Most of my liaison assignments actually happened before the last meeting, but a few. We'll start with Starbus and something that, and I think Doc said we should do it during our comments. Laura, Commissioner Shane Field might have spoken a little bit, well, a lot of bit about this topic. And that's, she currently sits as the liaison for Golden Hour Senior Center, which means at 9:30 in the AM on Tuesdays once a month, I sit a Starbus liaison, which means in Rock Springs at 5:00 PM. And we like to switch those assignments just for, really, for feasibility for both of us. With Lauren's work schedule and it being a morning meeting in Green River, and her living in Rock Springs, it makes it very difficult to attend. I now don't have an office in Rock Springs and live in Green River. And so it kind of is a, it makes it, so it's a little more effective for both of us. So with the chairman's permission, we'd like to make that switch effective this month.
Thank you. I don't believe any other Commissioner would like to take on another liaison, because I think we have plenty. So if you two would like to switch that, those two liaisons, I think if we're all in agreement, we can make that happen, because it's you as Commissioners approve those appointments as well. So our, I'll just, Commissioner Tolman's here. Are you okay with that, Commissioner? All right. So with this conversation considered, Commissioner Lloyd now will become the liaison to Golden Hour, is that correct?
Correct.
And then Commissioner Shane Field will become the liaison to Starbus. All right. Ashley, make sure we let Sally know so she can correct our liaison sheet. Thank you. All right, continue on, Commissioner Lloyd.
With that, I will probably make some appearances every two or three months into Starbus to say hello, because I've really enjoyed working with that board, and they do a great job. And speaking of that, you would like to get involved in the community. Starbus does have an opening, and I would encourage you at looking at being a part of their board. They do have one current opening on their board, and we'd like to get that filled. But it's a great board that does some great stuff. The other, really only other liaison meeting I had was I met with Conservation District last week. It was a two-part meeting. We had a regular meeting, but they also met prior to me getting there in a workshop setting with the Snake River Conservation District, as they're kind of looking at some boundaries and some partnerships that will allude on a little bit more at the next meeting, when there's more put in place. But it's great to see our Conservation District has great working relationships with the other Conservation Districts in the area, and how they can partner and work together to help the constituents that they serve in better ways. So do appreciate that. Outside of that, at that meeting, we did some updates on the Bitter Creek. And Josh Corsi has stepped down from that board, and, and he's been replaced. And Mary, maybe you can help me with Dwight, and he's been a former supervisor. Can't remember Dwight's last name.
Oh, Dwight Bliss. Oh, they have appointed him to fill?
Yeah, they did at the last meeting. So.
Oh, great.
And I hope I'm not, yeah, I think that was what they did.
And Larry folks replaced my spot.
Okay. So it's good to see that organization moving forward. Outside of that, had a chance to go and check out the Green River Honor Flags display this weekend, and I think their Chamber of Commerce should be commended for what was really cool, and really a nice, nice small event. and really a nice, nice small event. Also had the chance to check out Green River's local downtown vendor fair and think that really commend the city for putting together an event like that. I think it went really well. And then want to thank Mark Dell. You know, we talked, you'd read the, the letter from the 4H, Mark Dell, who was really active in 4H and also the state, the First Bank President. He sent me a picture of the day they were actually shooting and applauding and just thanking the Commission and wanted me to know. And so I thought that was pretty, pretty awesome. I did have to remind him that there was a 4-1 vote to do that, but he still sent me the picture. And I wanted to make sure he wasn't giving me credit where credit wasn't due, but they, but he was very, they were very thankful, and I know they had a great day that day. And outside of that, just double check my notes. Oh, I also had the chance, I guess the last thing is, I know we've already given the guy enough Adelaide's, but now that he's out of the building, did have a chance to come to Rob Slaughter's going away. And I'll be honest, it's going to be kind of weird to go a week or two without going in that office, because I probably went in there once or twice, if not four to five times a month. And, and I know we've thanked him enough already, and you don't want to swallow a guy's head any bigger, but he will really be missed. And I'm, and I just, and I'm really excited to see what we get as possible replacements. But know that I feel for anyone going into that office, because you can't replace 33 years. And when you think about it, five years ago, Sue Sanchez resigned, and she resigned with like 45 years. So between those two employees, they had 88 years in the Treasurer's Office. That is just unheard of in this day. So big thanks to Rob. Hope you're enjoying the golf course and while we're meeting. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Good report. Go ahead, Commissioner Toman.
I was wondering if this commission, if we shouldn't, I applaud the SEDC for getting on board with helping recruit the Natron plant to Sweetwater County, because it's going to be a heavy competition between the four possible sites. So I don't know if we would want to do a resolution as a commission or support, or do you have any ideas, Lauren, besides what SEDC is doing?
So I actually was going to request to speak after Commissioner Lloyd was done, because I forgot to even mention it. But we need to, I was hoping to get feedback from our commission on a letter from the county specifically. And I, it's not been fully drafted yet, but that would be included in that packet. And, you know, first and foremost is, you know, the county, that we want them here and why, and what that looks like. And then I would be willing to send that out in an email for double checking, making sure we didn't miss anything, or if there's anything we want to include in that, and then have our chairman sign it.
Okay.
If that's okay with everyone.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Toman? Does that help?
Yes. We may also request a special meeting with them, because they said they're going to go to the county that is the most supportive. I mean, what, what other types of things would they be interested in having us help them support? I don't know that we have a ton of money, but you know, you know. Is there something we could offer as an incentive that would encourage them to come here? And I'm not sure who we would speak with, Ron Wild, or who we would talk to in Rocky Mountain Power, but maybe SEDC can let us know if there are a special meeting with the commissioners regarding what they would like to see from a county that is sponsoring, or hosting that plant.
Yeah, I, I think what you're working through SEDC, because it represents not only the whole county, well, it represents both cities and represents four towns as well. So it's a whole county collaborative group that have business partners on it and that type of thing and that. So I believe they're working on, what am I going to say? Working to provide supportive information as to why that should be located here in the county, and I, and I think they should continue to work on that. And if they think of anything that we can do besides the letter, and I know there's several other things going outside besides this, and I think just this, yesterday I also read a letter, excuse me, coming out of Enterprise with a support for that particular power plant to be located in Sweetwater County, signed by the members of Enterprise. And of course, my name was on it, and I read through it, and it's a really good letter representing desire to have it here. And I told them I was okay, have my name on it, and it doesn't represent anything for the commission, so I felt comfortable moving it forward. But there'll be more things like that, that SEDC will have here shortly, that they'll request for support and that type of thing through industry, through the college, as well as ourselves as governing bodies. So I think SEDC has grabbed it with support of, of our two cities and, and the industry that's represented through there, and are working to put together, I'll just say, a proposal of why that project should be here in Sweetwater County. So I think there's a lot of stuff going on in the background very quickly that, that not all of us are aware of, but it's very, very positive stuff. I'll just say that. Commissioner Schoenfeld?
Thank you. And I also wanted to share with the group that in discussion, I don't remember which, I believe it was the Rocky Mountain Power CEO, he actually told me that they could feel the positive energy when they came into the meeting room and that they were very excited about that. And I think the fact that we all work together and SEDC has formed in a very strong coalition, we have a lot of strong, I'm not going to say strong personalities, but strong, powerful, you know, people are excited. We've got a lot of momentum going with SEDC, and I think that, I think that we will, I think we'll be successful in pushing out the very best possible proposal that we can for our community. And I'll, I'll let the commission know if there's anything additional that comes up.
Very good. Thank you. Does that help answer some of the questions you had, Commissioner Toman?
Yes.
All right. If there's any more, yeah, let's direct them right to SEDC through Lauren and that group. Okay? Anything else, commissioners? Anything else out of the ordinary? We're ahead of schedule, so now's a good time. Okay, with that being said, our next agenda item would be Tab C, which is the action present item, and we are ahead of schedule. That's not scheduled till 9:40, and we are at 9:10 almost, so we're a half hour ahead. And I think it's important to allow public to get on, if that's the time, and to watch the action items or pick any particular ones. So let's take a break, unless you feel differently. Let's take a break until about 09:00. Let's make it 9:35. Let's take a half hour. I can't see starting any sooner than 9:40, much closer, I mean, starting any sooner than 9:35, because we've requested agenda items to be present 15 minutes ahead of time. So let's take a break till 9:35. 9:35, thank you.
Sorry, I should have told you when you walked to the room, I was going to say.
What's that?
I was going to say, hey, we're going to take a break based on where.
If anybody wants to after the meeting.
Sounds good.
He's getting right over.
Good, good.
They're both on now. Cindy, they're both on now.
Yeah. I turned it on and off, but it worked.
That's weird.
Not sure why. It just wasn't on.
Yeah.
I'll call this meeting back to order and our first agenda item for action this morning is approval of at-large appointment for the Sweetwater County Water Users Coalition Board. At the, which is formerly the Community is Protecting the Green. As I reported at the last meeting, there was a resignation by Richard Mathews who served on that board for a long time and did an outstanding job. He resigned to move with, to his nearest family and, and enjoy more of the outdoors. And so through that process, he not only resigned from the, which is now the Sweetwater County Water Users Coalition Board as well as the hospital. So, and at the last meeting, I notified the group that the Water Users Coalition Board would at the next meeting appoint a member or request a nominated member. And that was Nick Walworth, who is a, works with Trout Unlimited. And because he's an at-large member, both the two cities as well as the county need to approve that appointment. So at this time, I would ask any questions commissioners regarding the appointee, appointment?
Nick is a, I think he would be a good addition to the board.
Yeah, there. Nick is also doing a lot of projects right now and, and working with ranchers in areas of water and shepherding water, trying to find ways to shepherd water through conservation, especially through the water crisis that we're presently having with the Colorado River Basin as well as the Upper Green. So, and there's some great work he's done in the past and he continues to do more great work. So you're exactly right, Commissioner, for that he would be a very good member of the board. So any other questions? If there's none, I would entertain a motion to approve Nick Walworth to the Sweetwater County Water Users Coalition Board.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tomlin to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? Motion carries. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you for helping me with that. All right, moving on. Under tab C, we have the Board of County Commissioners, a partial release of letter of credit for the Ranch View Estates subdivision. And here to present that is Mr. Bingham. Good morning, Eric.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. So thank you. So we're here today to do a partial release of a letter of credit that is held by Rock Springs National Bank. The, the amount that we're looking to release is fifteen thousand and ninety dollars and fifty-one cents. It is for engineering and surveying services from JFC. And I have included the copy of the bill. Just an update on Ranch View subdivision. We are to the point that the roads are in, the fire hydrants are in, still need chip sealing done on the road. So there's some work to be done. We'll do a final inspection. We have over eight hundred thousand dollars still left in the letter of credit. So we have more than enough to cover as far as bonding goes. So I urge your request to, to approve the request, Mr. Chairman. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. Commissioners, any questions? No questions? Then I'll ask commissioners, what's your desire, pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Lloyd?
I would make just a motion to do a partial release of a letter of credit in the amount of fifteen thousand ninety, oh, fifteen thousand ninety dollars and fifty-one cents for engineering and surveying services.
You have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane Field. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sounds good.
Good, good.
They're both on now. Cindy, they're both on now.
Yeah, I, I turned it on and off, but it worked.
That's weird.
Not sure why. It just wasn't on. Yeah.
I'll call this meeting back to order and our first agenda item for action this morning is approval of at-large appointment for the Sweetwater County Water Users Coalition Board at the, which is formerly the Community's Protecting the Green. As I reported at the last meeting, there was a resignation by Richard Mathews, who served on that board for a long time and did an outstanding job. He resigned to move with, to his nearest family and, and enjoy more of the outdoors. And so through that process, he not only resigned from the, which is now the Sweetwater County Water Users Coalition Board, as well as a hospital. So, and at the last meeting, I notified the group that the Water Users Coalition Board would at a next meeting, appoint a member or request to nominate a member, and that was Nick Walworth, who is a, works with Trout Unlimited. And because he's an art at-large member, both the two cities as well as the county need to approve that appointment. So at this time, I would ask any questions, commissioners regarding the appointee, appointment?
Nick is a, I think he would be a good addition to the board.
Yeah, there, Nick is also doing a lot of projects right now and, and working with ranchers in areas of water and shepherding water, trying to find ways to shepherd water through conservation, especially through the water crisis that we're presently having with the Colorado River Basin, as well as the Upper Greens. So, and there's some great work he's done in the past and he continues to do more great work. So you're exactly right, Commissioner, for that he would be a very good member of the board. So any other questions? If there's none, I would entertain a motion to approve Nick Walworth to the Sweetwater County Water Users Coalition Board.
Mr. Oh, sorry.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tomlin to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? Motion carries. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you for helping me with that. All right, moving on. Under tab C, we have the Board of County Commissioners, a partial release of letter of credit for the Ranch View Estates subdivision. And here to present that is Mr. Bingham. Good morning, Eric.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. So thank you. So we're here today to do a partial release of a letter of credit that is held by Rock Springs National Bank. The, the amount that we're looking to release is fifteen thousand and ninety dollars and fifty-one cents. It is for engineering and surveying services from JFC. And I have included the copy of the bill. Just an update on Ranch View subdivision. We are to the point of the roads are in, the fire hydrants are in. Still need chip sealing done on the road. So there's some work to be done. We'll do a final inspection. We have over eight hundred thousand dollars still left in the letter of credit. So we have more than enough to cover as far as bonding goes. So I urge your request to, to approve the request, Mr. Chairman. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. Commissioners, any questions? No questions? Then I'll ask commissioners, what's your desire, pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Lloyd.
I would make just a motion to do a partial release of a letter of credit in the amount of fifteen thousand ninety, fifteen thousand ninety dollars and fifty-one cents for engineering and surveying services.
You have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. Have a good day. Next up, under tab E, is the Grow Home Sweetwater County Update. And I believe to present that here is Ms. McDonald. Kayla, good morning.
Good morning.
Do you have anybody with us? I believe you may on, on the screen, right?
I do. I have Mo Collins with me today. She is a partner in entrepreneur communities. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to her and then I'll take the final part of this.
Good morning, Mo. You're still muted.
Good morning, everyone. Hello, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this morning. I will be very brief. We've had, we've had the good fortune to be working with small business owners and community leaders in Sweetwater County between March and June of this year. We have learned a lot. We have, I believe, contributed in some fairly measurable ways to some of your small business owners in the region. And I just want to say thank you, first of all, for allowing us to beta this program with you and with your small business owners. We have two deliverables that I want to touch base with you on. The first is our ecosystem assessment, which you received in April. It's a white paper that was derived from a combination of interviews with small business owners and community leaders, and then secondary research that we did around things like bandwidth and an innovation index and the start and closure of small businesses over the past decade in Sweetwater County. And I hope you've had a chance to see that when it came out. And the, the other piece of that then is our final report, which you should have received this week, that also includes some recommendations. And I'm really pleased to share with you that what we learned and the recommendations are really tightly woven together around where we need to go in terms of supporting entrepreneurs and small business owners in Sweetwater County, and how many of the changes that are occurring economically across the country are being mirrored here in the county. I, I will say, one of the most wonderful things about being in Sweetwater County was the resiliency and self-determination and, and just general overall independence of the small businesses that we had the good fortune to interact with. And we served twenty-four small companies with one-on-one interactions, counseling, technical assistance and mentoring. And then we hosted three roundtables that brought an additional number of small business owners to the table to talk about what it's like to do business in Sweetwater County, what kinds of encumbrances that they face, and also what opportunities that they see that can be supported going forward. And our recommendations really mirror what we learned. And so I'm hopeful that this has been a useful and helpful project for you and both short-term and long-term, and offering some opportunity for small businesses in the region to receive immediate and effective support and assistance going forward. I will say, and I know Kayla's going to touch on this, I believe, that we are now moving this beta test into a number of counties across the country, including Tennessee, Iowa, Florida and California. And as we go, we will be offering webinars, roundtables, that kind of thing. And it's our intent to continue to make those services available to the small business community through KLA and SEDC on an opt-in basis for free, ongoing. And we feel like that's how we begin to build a network of support and assistance to rural small business owners across the country. So it's part and parcel of our mission. And I'm hopeful and pleased that we're able to include Sweetwater County in that. So Kayla, I'll turn it over to you for other comments. Thank you again for allowing us to be of service this spring.
Thank you, Mo. Appreciate it. Before you go, Kayla's question, commissioners, have any questions for Mo before she goes? All right, no questions. All right, we'll turn the floor over to Kayla McDonald. Go ahead, Kayla.
Yes, thank you. So this was the project that we partnered with Wyoming Business Council for Funding on a Rural Development Grant. And we were given a thirty-six hundred dollar grant for that. And the other half of that portion, we divided between the two cities. So this small business development project that we did, we are looking at as part of our strategic plan. We did meet in June with our group and some other businesses and stakeholders and identified that entrepreneur development is a huge need in Sweetwater County. So one of the recommendations that I do want to highlight, and I did email this to you guys, is compiling of regional resources. So that's something that we can do with the help of Mo's team, and then also coordinating service providers. So partnering more with our chambers, our URAs, our SBDC, even on a state and local level as well. Another thing that I'm really excited about is something that we did back when I was with the chamber is we did some start your own business classes, and those were huge for us. We had two businesses come out of those classes that are now striving and actually thriving to even expand further, which is one you have now in Green River, the Coal Train Coffee, they've expanded over here. And you have that girl, three oh seven auto cleaning, and she started as a in-home business and has purchased a property and she's doing great. So those are some pieces of excitement out of those programs. But we did talk about a pitch event type program. So maybe they can put together something with the business council. We have Bert Adam with the business council, who does entrepreneur services. And that's something we can partner on that and do like a fun little business plan pitch type, I guess, like Shark Tank. So that could be something that we could look at going forward. But the community college has also stepped up as well. We started having some conversations about how we can utilize the Green River Center over here, maybe as an incubator or a startup resource network. So there's a lot of exciting things that we can do with our partners with SEDC. So watch for some more programs and events to be coming after, I would say, probably this fall and into the next year. So we want to thank Mo for all of the work that her team did. There's some great feedback in this report. This will be on the SEDC website. So it'd be on sedc.org. And we'll have it all there. So if you guys have any questions, I'll take those. And we're just excited that this turned out as good as it did.
Good. Thank you, Kayla. Any questions for Kayla, commissioners? Okay, yeah, it is. It's good stuff. And we thank Mo for your work with, with us and helping to bring things to fruition and keep things moving, being part of that. Kayla, we appreciate the work SEDC is doing. And, and under both you and Eric's leadership, we can't tell you how grateful we are. And we believe it's a thriving, bubbling organization, SEDC. And there are a lot, a lot of things coming out of it. So we thank you for that. And we thank you, Mo. If there's no questions for either Kayla or Mo, we'll let you go.
Great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Up next on our agenda is the award of the fiscal year dust control project. And to present that is Mr. Legursky. Good morning, Mr. Legursky.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Huh?
Cooler in here.
It is. It feels great. Is it because of the early morning or did we do some work?
Early morning.
I thought so.
Honestly, it's just early morning.
Come back at two.
Yeah, come back at two.
Come back at two. There you go. Thank you. Well, we appreciate, yeah, it's nice to have all the chairs in here. I know you had something to do with that. So thank you very much. Appreciate that. Go ahead. Floor is yours.
And so what we have before you is the award of the fiscal year twenty-one dust control project. A little bit different this year. We typically bid this out as a CMAC project. But CMAC, the feds changed the contract requirements on it a little bit. So it had to go through the AG's office. We did not get approval until like June, middle of June. By the time you get the plans, you send them down to Whiteout, we weren't going to bid this out until August. So we're just going to put out a small dust control project for the roads that we only need to do this year. We're experimenting with a couple of different roads. So it's quite a bit smaller than the normal CMAC project. This comes out of fuel tax money, just like we typically do. Because usually we, you know, we bid a CMAC project and a dust control project. I just took some of that CMAC roads and put them over in our dust control project. So what we're doing is I talked to the state, we're holding the CMAC money until next year, which they'll allow us to do. We're one of two counties that spend the CMAC money in the exact same year we get that in, which is good because we get an extra ten points on our evaluation for CMAC. So it moves us up in the thing. But it's bad when they are behind on giving us the money. So it's just one of those things where we hit a snag and we're just going to put out a dust control project. So.
All right, thank you. Questions for Mr. Legursky, commissioners? Regarding dust control project? If not, I'll entertain a motion. What's your pleasure, commissioners, and authorizing the chairman to sign?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lloyd.
I'd like to make a motion that we award the bid of the two thousand twenty-one county road dust control project to Dust Busters Enterprises Incorporated in the sum of three hundred and nine thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents, and authorize the chairman to sign all necessary project documents.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Lloyd. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion, commissioners? No further discussion. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Go ahead. Next up, I believe also, Mr. Legursky, is memorandum of agreement between the Idaho National Guard and Sweetwater County. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, floor is yours, sir.
So what you have before you this time, and a little bit of background, I was contacted back in February by the Idaho National Guard to see if they could utilize the space that is directly south of the armory. We actually, you guys actually own that property. It's between Signal, north of Signal, kind of between Bonds and the Armory, for lack of a better way. They'll be down here on July ninth and tenth, and again, July twenty-second and twenty-third of this year. He went through the process and got all of their checks and balances through their process and got us the thing two weeks ago. So we just barely missed the cutoff for the last meeting. So there, as you can see by the memorandum, they are going to bring in quite a few people.
Yeah.
For this. Hundred and eighty military personnel, personnel and ninety tactical vehicles. So they'll need extra space up there. I enclosed a map so you guys could see what we're talking about with where the armory is and then how much they want to use Sweetwater County. By the memo, the memorandum, they will completely take care of everything out there. If there's any trash, you know, all of that stuff, they'll fix up the place if they disturb it. Right now, they don't think they're going to need anything, but they just want extra space just in case.
Very good.
It's interesting, why Sweetwater County? I mean, I don't.
I don't know what they're doing. You know, I know the city of Green River last year brought in some stuff for the airport. I wonder if this is in conjunction or something like that. They were just looking for more people. I don't know.
We, we done this before, or you don't?
Never done this before, but I know of.
Not that it matters.
Not, not, not at this scale.
Okay.
You know, I know I'd been called two or three years ago where they had to park one truck overnight or something like that. They just said, do it. But not, nothing of this scale.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, commissioner? Commissioner Shanefield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there any concern over dust control in that area?
There is, but they're going to take care of everything. If we get complaints or whatever like that, they're going to take care of, they, they will take care of everything. They have water trucks and everything. So.
Good.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? What's your pleasure regarding this memorandum of agreement between the Idaho National Guard and Sweetwater County?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner Shanefield.
Make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Idaho National Guard and Sweetwater County regarding local training area and land use as presented.
And authorize.
And authorize chairman to sign.
Thank you. Have a motion to approve and authorize the chairman to sign by Commissioner Shanefield. Is there a second?
I would be happy to second.
We got a second by Commissioner Tomlin. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Legursky. Appreciate it. Up next, I believe we have a couple of approval of catering permits. And to present those is our clerk, Cindy Lane. Good morning, Ms. Lane.
Good morning, Chairman, commissioners. First, I have an approval of a catering permit for Wes's LLC doing business as Eden Saloon on July tenth, twenty twenty-one, for the Mitchellson Retirement Party at the Community Center in Farson, Wyoming.
I have a question.
Hang on a second. Thank you. All right, I just got it up. Thank you. Question, commissioners? Commissioner Tomlin?
Does that include alcohol too then? Is it food and alcohol? I, I didn't read it either. I'm sorry. That well, I guess I didn't read that well.
See, you know, I don't know. It does not. Let me see.
Or does it matter?
I don't know. I can check on that. I think I would know that, but I don't want to give you the wrong answer.
Okay, other questions?
I believe the catering permit does include small beverages.
Any other question?
Double check.
Yeah. Other questions? All right, with no further questions, commissioners, your pleasure regarding this permit, catering permit.
Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the catering permit for Wes's LLC for the Mitchellson Party.
You have a motion to approve and, and authorize the chairman to sign, Commissioner Tomlin?
Authorize the chairman to sign.
Thank you very much. We have a motion by Commissioner Tomlin to approve and authorize the chairman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? Further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ms. Lane, you're still up to, for another catering permit.
Okay, second, I have approval of a catering permit for Wes's LLC doing business as Eden Saloon on August seventeenth for the Kaylee Burnett wedding at the Community Center in Farson, Wyoming.
Okay, commissioners, you have before you a, a request to approve a catering permit? Any questions? No questions. What's your pleasure, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shanefield?
I will make a motion to approve the catering permit for Wes's LLC doing business as Eden Saloon on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, for Kaylee Burnett wedding at the Community Center in Farson, and authorize the chairman to sign.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the catering permit and authorize the chairman to sign by Commissioner Shanefield. Is there a second?
I will second.
Saying, second by Mr. Commissioner Tomlin.
Trying to give Mr. Lloyd a choice.
That was seconded by Chairman Tomlin, our chairman. Commissioner Tomlin, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lane. Okay, next up, oh, here we go. Time-wise, we're in good shape. Oh, we're way ahead of schedule. This is, this is scheduled for ten thirty and we're at ten o'clock. And it's a pretty important topic, commissioners, so.
Mr. Chairman, could we skip ahead to like restaffing the clerk position or something?
You know, we could have, we, we'd need Mr. McLean up here. And we couldn't go on with the next without Ms. Kelly. And time-wise, I think Tab L on the federal holidays is important. There'll be people that want to listen to that. Mike Bernazian won't be here till eleven twenty-five or a little. So with that, let's, let's just take, you know, let's just take another break without moving too far ahead because of the importance of some of our topics. So commissioners, you've been doing good work. You deserve a break. So it's ten fifteen. Let's shoot for ten twenty for that ten thirty agenda item. So we'll adjourn, take a break. So we'll adjourn, take a break.
We're going to the hires. Yeah. Okay. We'll call this meeting back to order after our break and also we're going to adjust a couple of agenda items. So we do the general purpose tax resolution. Well, it's scheduled for 10:30. That's all right, but it's going to take a little longer time. So let's first do the hires as we planned on and that. So let's do first up with the request to restaff an election position within the clerk's office. So with that, I'd asked Mr. McLean, Ms. Lane, come forward or one or both and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, County Commissioners, for you as a request from the county clerk to restaff a vacancy that resulted from a retirement back in April of 2021 for an election clerk. The costs that are provided in your packet obviously would be potentially a little bit less from the entry level that we bring a person in on, obviously depending on the health insurance. And I know that Cindy was going to discuss a little bit with the election discussion today. But yeah, the request is for a vacant election clerk.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms.
Chairman Winley, Commissioners, as you see on the agenda, we are looking at a possible resolution. And if that were to come into effect, I would need to hire an elections clerk. My, my previous one did retire in April, not through an early separation, but just retired. And I was going to be before you in January of the election year, but potentially may need to do that sooner.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions regarding this request?
Yeah, I have a question for Clerk Lane. Um, so what are my questions? My only question, I guess, would be when we're not in an election year, like on an off year, the off year like this where we have two election clerks. It often seems to me that we wouldn't need two election clerks during off election years. I wouldn't, I'd have a hard time imagining there's full-time work for both. Is there a plan to have them do other things at that point or am I, am I off? Because I don't know.
Well, first, there is a lot to do even on off election years, but you are correct. So that position is half titles, half election. Uh, we haven't gotten there yet because I, we've had trained for elections because I was new and they were new. So we trained for elections. And then when we got to a point where we can start cross-training, my current elections clerk is already cross-training. Um, and we will then have to, of course, if this were to happen, the resolution was passed. We would be training again for elections and then is, and then we go right into the next election year. And then that person would also begin training for titles. I also need to have someone trained for land records because at this moment I have two people. And if someone is out, they have to work through lunch because we can't close down. Um, and they, um, we really need someone else to cross-train in that area as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, Commissioners? With that, what's your pleasure, Commissioners, regarding restaffing this position?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Shanefield.
I'll make a motion to restaff this position as requested pending the decision of the potential resolution that we are going to be discussing later today.
Okay, we have a motion to approve pending the outcome of the resolution by Commissioner Chainfield. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I would second.
Got a second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Lane. And I think you have one more, Mr. McLean, for restaffing? With, yep. The next item on our agenda is to restaff a vacant position for the juvenile probation or not, yes. And Mr. McLean and Ms. Kelly's here. Good morning.
Morning, Ms. Chairman, County Commissioners. We have a request to restate, restaff a vacancy that resulted from the loss of the resignation of the secretary in the office. This position has been an important part of the office. As you know, most of the work done in juvenile probation is done at the schools, meeting with parents, at the city, at the courts. And this position has maintained most of the administrative functions within the office. As you know, recently with the loss of the pre-court diversion grant funding and that, that position will end the 23rd, 21st of this month. Um, I had suggested to Karen about looking at some options also where this position may be able to help out with the diversion as well as the agents. I think, as you recall from our previous discussions, we had talked about the importance of diversion. And I don't know if Danny's here today, but, uh, and we met with County Attorney Danair Mosby, who had a, um, had been involved in some statewide discussions regarding the importance of diversion statewide in trying to keep juveniles out of the detention facilities and, and out of detention generally. And so it seems like there's a lot of support and interest in the diversion side. And it seems like, um, this position could perform some of those clerical functions and also help with maintaining the diversion program along with the other agents. And so, um, Ms. Kelly had placed in your packet kind of a discussion, a more detailed discussion, um, as well as some options that she considered in terms of looking how to meet the, the needs of the department.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Ms. Kelly, anything to add?
Um, you write your packet, if anybody asks questions, I'll try to answer that regarding information that's provided. We're in a difficult position right now with two staff members down. We're barely meeting the basic needs, let alone expanding anything.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for either Ms. Kelly or Mr. McLean?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Lloyd.
Um, Ms. Kelly, you presented us four options. I guess what would be your preference in those options?
Certainly having the agent would help us with that diversion program. Having the secretary, we absolutely need somebody in there doing some coordination, making sure we're meeting the statutory requirements for distributing documents, getting things done on a timely measure. But having an agent help with some of those duties would also allow us to do diversion. So that would be the preference.
And which option was that?
Either a part-time or a full-time. The full-time is a significant increase in cost. A part-time agent, I think, brings us pretty close.
If I understand, I think, I think what had been discussed was to have the clerical position and then have them also be able to help out with the diversion.
Very good.
Uh, within the department, the diversion program.
Very good. Thank you.
Training and organization.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Lloyd?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could ask another follow-up question. I guess, um, I, I kind of like the part-time concept, but do you think you can feasibly find someone in this, um, in this climate to work a professional job like that on a part-time basis?
I don't know. We will, we will set applications if approved and see what's available to you.
Commissioner Lloyd, I, in the last few positions that we filled, we've had 70, 76 applications. So there's lots of interest in work. Um, so I think for the clerical side, I would say yes unequivocally. Getting someone with a little more wherewithal, especially if we required a bachelor's degree, that would be more challenging.
That's my thought.
Thank you. Other questions, Commissioners? Okay, no further questions. I do know we asked Karen what her recommendation was. Gary, did you have one and you read through them or not?
Um, just, I think the overall recommendation in discussions with everybody was that we could have a person do the clerical support. And if we get a strong person in that role, they could help do the diversion program and maintain that. And there is a fair amount of administrative work with the diversion program also. So I think, you know, we could probably make something work in that realm.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Is there an educational requirement for that diversion probation officer? They could limit it if we run it out of a clerical position?
The last case worker we had had an associate's degree. If they're only doing diversion, I think we can do just the associates and not require a bachelor's because they aren't, we have a bachelor's for the regular probation agents because there's a lot of court writing and court documents that are prepared, which is a higher level of writing. But our current case manager, previous case manager had an associate, so that is also an option for us.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Well, we have four options before us. Is there a, Commissioners, what's your pleasure? There's really five options and that's not hire anybody at all. Fifth one. Your pleasure, Commissioners. Commissioner Toman?
I would make a motion to hire based on the recommendation of Ms. Kelly and Mr. McLean.
Okay, if I, can I interject on that motion? If that's correct, I believe it's option two is what I've been hearing, which basically is replace vacant full-time probation secretary, grade 10, with a part-time probation agent, grade 15, 29 hours per week with limited benefits, option two. Is that correct? Okay, so your motion is, uh, Ms. Toman, on their recommendation would be option two. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carries, option two. I'll sign that one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one. All right, with that, we'll move back to tab, uh, tab I, which is the approval of Kate, of, I'm sorry, it's tab J on my list, which is the general purpose tax resolution. And I believe here to present that is Ryan Rust with City Green River. I know, Ryan, before you present, you may have some guests here that may help you come up and help you if there's any questions or something like that. But before you get going, I, I would like to just express to But before you get going, I, I would like to just express to the audiences that are listening as well as those that are here that this presentation by Ryan is done at the bequest of the intergovernmental leadership throughout the county. And it's still a resolution, tax resolution that general, and it's general purpose tax resolution that the county will take the lead on. But yet, what we're seeing today, rather than a person present to the county, a, from the county, we've asked people in expertise throughout the intergovernmental leadership to work as a collaboratively with all the agent, or with all the governmental agencies. So that's why Ryan is here to present because he works very closely with the intergovernmental as well as he does, he's an expert in presenting. That's what he is hired for, for Green River, and we're glad he's here to do this because he is part of the intergovernment. So I just want people to know that it's because of the intergovernmental agencies as Brian's presenting. But this is still, if, if a resolution is passed, it will be a county-led resolution. And Ryan's done all the hard work and all the heavy lifting to bring it to this point with assistance from both City of Rock Springs and the county and the city of Green River, and the small towns have been in the conversations as well. So that's where we're at, but now it's time to bring it to the public and to begin moving towards whatever the results of this presentation is, if it's a resolution or otherwise. So with that, I welcome Ryan Rust. And Ryan, I know you have some guests in the audience. If you would just introduce who they are and what their roles are, and then the floor is yours.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. I am Ryan Rust, the Government Affairs and Grants Manager for the City of Green River. We have Steve Corr, who is our Director, and Chris Meets, our Finance Director and City Clerk. So as the chairman stated, this really is a presentation from the intergovernmental group that we've been having some meetings discussing some issues, perceived issues that we have here and some potential ways to deal with this. So this is one piece of that potentially. So I'll, I'll try and go through this relatively quickly and answer any general questions you might have. Get my singing voice here.
We, yeah, Ryan, speak into the, otherwise the listening audience just can't hear.
Yes, sir. Sorry about that. So you'll see going through this in discussions with the intergovernmental group. This is really based on a 1% sales and use tax. You'll see that throughout the presentation, just so you're aware. So we've, we've got the general purpose tax for Sweetwater County's public safety agencies and economic development. So the problem here, we're here to discuss public safety. Now, this is the fiscal year 21 budget. These are general government funds that are going to these agencies. There are many more, of course, in, in our towns throughout the county who have different makeups for, for public safety organizations. But you can see with just Green River, Rock Springs in the county, we're approaching $37 million in fiscal year 21, so pretty significant expenses. At the same time, revenue is severely reduced, and we all know that. So we need to find a, a way to cap costs, share costs, or find another sustainable revenue model to sustain these services. And that's partially what the intergovernmental working group has been doing. With public safety in particular, you know, we've got various groups looking at various pieces of this. There's really a lot of interrelated things with, with some of these organizations being public safety. So we kind of took a 30,000-foot level approach to this and what's one option to take care of some of those issues for a number of these organizations. So these will be pretty quick, as you know, sales and use tax collection across the county has dropped significantly. We're really working off of about fiscal year '03 revenues with fiscal year '22 now expenses. So pretty significant, and you can see that the inflation, we're just far, far below even keeping up with inflation. This is just Wyoming inflation rates. You all are quite aware of the rising cost of ambulance subsidies that the county is providing right now, going up consistently. Similarly, the Joint Communications Center, a pretty significant expense for, for all of us. And then we have the combined subsidies here. I think what's, what's interesting when you look at it as a portion of the sales tax revenue, which of course for cities and towns is the largest portion of our revenue, for the, the three largest entities, funding of the ambulance and the joint communications from sales tax, you can just take 12.4% straight off the top to go to those. All of that revenue is just gone, dedicated to those services, so pretty significant. So really to go through a timeline of how we got here, as you know, in December of 2020, due to falling revenue and increasing costs, the commission announced that we were going to terminate the ambulance subsidy effective March 31st. Then in January, we started the intergovernmental meetings to deal with this and some other areas of concern, including the Joint Combined Communications Center. And we met monthly February through May of 2021. In March, you all extended the subsidies for the ambulance service through June, through the end of the fiscal year, and have since done that for another fiscal year. And then that brings us here today. In June, we began the discussion with the intergovernmental group of options to put together a tax initiative resolution. So the proposal from the group is to create a stable funding source by levying a general purpose tax to fund ambulance service, joint communications, and other emergency services, as well as economic development initiatives to help diversify and grow our economy. So this is just a look at the, the last 10 years' average sales and use tax rate, what 1% brings in Sweetwater County. You know, I think it's important when you look at the average, there's 17.4 million dollars. Using the revenues from the last year are really not reflective of what we expect moving forward. So throughout this presentation, we've used fiscal year '19, the last full fiscal year prior to the COVID shutdown, which is very similar to the average of 17.4. We think those are good numbers to use, just to get an idea of where we will be in the future. So the general purpose tax can be levied in increments of a half a penny, not to exceed a rate of 2%. We currently in Sweetwater County have a 1% general purpose tax, which has been made permanent by resolution. So we have the ability to levy up to an additional 1% general purpose tax with an additional still 1% that includes specific purposes or more economic development taxes. The proposition can be submitted either at the general election, primary election, or special elections. And it must be approved by the voters and can be made permanent by the voters or by a resolution of the governing bodies of the county and 50% of the municipalities. So just some, some facts here about the general purpose tax. One of the, the things, departments may maintain separation, allowing for current operational form. We've discussed in some of these intergovernmental meetings how we can create some efficiencies and maybe combine some services. Some of that is occurring, I know, with the purchasing. It becomes a little bit more difficult with some public safety organizations. You're working with some, some are unions, some are non-union, some are volunteers. That becomes a little bit difficult. This, this provides some funding without, with allowing those organizations to maintain their current operational form. If you look at three-quarter general purpose tax, and we'll discuss that, based on fiscal year '19 numbers, approximately $13.25 million per year. When you look at three mills, which is typical for the max for a district, which has also been discussed, you're looking at 7.49 million. So a significant difference in the amount of revenue, especially when, again, we're talking about almost $40 million in costs. It's already on the books. Again, we have the ability to propose an additional 1%, can be made permanent. And I think this point is really important, that public safety services are used by more than just the property owners in the county. They're used by anybody who's traveling through the county, and anybody who's traveling through the county pays sales and use taxes. So therefore, it's a much more equitable tax for funding those kinds of services. And here's a little stat, in 2019, 22% of the total sales and use tax collected in Wyoming was from travelers. And so not only does that reduce the tax burden on our residents, but it also spreads that out to everybody who's using those services. And finally, the mineral, minerals industry plays, pays a disproportionate amount of the property taxes. This last fiscal year was about 47%. So they're more in tune to a, a sales and use tax to, to support these services that they also rely on. So this graph just kind of shows the, what a 1% general purpose tax does based on fiscal year '19 numbers. Statutorily, it's required to be distributed based on population numbers. These numbers will change in the near future as the census numbers roll in, but it gives you a general idea of what each entity might receive from a 1% tax. We'll go through this pretty quickly, but these are all the revenue propositions that were on the ballot in, in 2020. So this was the November election. This was the height of the pandemic. We had concerns about people being willing to pass a tax resolution in Wyoming. 19 of the 23 counties had a resolution. 12 of them were for completely new revenue measures. Of the 32 total propositions, 29 were passed, three were rejected. Overwhelming support, and those that passed did so with an average vote of 69%. So pretty significant support. Just a couple interesting ones. Nioburra County passed a specific purpose for 30 years. Thought that was kind of an interesting.
Incredible.
Yeah, so, and, and they did so with about 70% in favor voting of that. So just some sales and use tax scenarios that are possible. I, I will say that the general purpose tax, as we know in the state of Wyoming, the state levies 4% sales and use tax. We have that 1%. The 4%, the, the 1% general purpose that we currently get raises almost as much revenue for each entity as the total 4% because of the cut that the state takes away. So each additional percent is pretty significant compared to the other percentage points and will be distributed, just like the current fifth penny is. So with a setup like this, we support our public safety agency, free up funds for other priorities. We can still do a full 1% specific purpose tax and allows for innovative economic development projects that further enhance our tax base. So just some possibilities. These are the election dates coming up for which this tax is able to be put on the ballot. A breakdown of what each quarter percent would bring in based on fiscal year '19 numbers. We know that statute 22-21-103, we have 110 days before the elections, provide written notification to the county clerk. So if not now, when? So with three-quarters of pennies going to, three-quarters of a penny going to fund the public safety kinds of concerns. Ambulance funding, this is again at fiscal year '21 budgeted numbers, the joint communications. We've got a total funding of $4.5 million, which would leave 8.7 million, again, to cover those other public safety, the, the sheriff's office, the police departments, the fire, all of those things that, again, total 40 million or more in our county. So it would cover 100% of the general fund expenditures for ambulance and joint communication, leave funding available for other public safety expenditures and/or future increases or reserve funds that can be built up to support those in the future. Freeze up funding for municipalities in the county for, for infrastructure, parks, and recreation, other, other priorities. Removes the need to create or increase mill levies from the special districts supporting some of these services. Can result in offsetting the, every mill levy reductions or increase in the expanded services. Also provides funding to the county, WOMP center, and barrel oil that can be used to offset their EMS costs in those communities and the Eden Valley, who all tax themselves or have various ways in which they receive these public safety services. So again, a portion of the general purpose tax would be, we're, we're talking, could be used for economic development initiatives. And we have SEDC doing such a great job for us here. These are some of the opportunities for, for providing funding to that group and other economic development initiatives. So they're, they're marketing existing vacant buildings for future expansions and recruitment with support of the Wyoming Business Council and a partner site selection agency, developing a countywide marketing package for recruitment purposes, recruiting local, state, national, and international companies that fit our community and workforce, looking to create incentive mechanisms to address current holdbacks in recruitment, creating a 501(c)(3) nonprofit foundation for purposes of fundraising and donations to aid in future growth of SEDC. Assist and support partner entities who are striving to create quality of life initiatives and projects in Sweetwater County. And we're, we're seeing some results from these. There's projects and leads from all over the US, Canada, and Brazil, including industries like data center, blockchain, large-scale manufacturing, firearms, and ammunition, aerospace, food processing. We've got some unique names for some of those projects that we can't openly talk about as the recruitment process is going on. But there really is some, some work going on, and this could provide some of the support to further diversify our economy and attract some of those groups to our community. Of course, we know the Middle Baxter Road project that you all are very familiar with. Lots of potential to bring in some, some industry, jobs, economic development for our county. Additional benefits like bringing water up to the airport, which we have invested heavily in. We're going to have a state-of-the-art airport and still be trucking water to it. Certainly something we can do there. We know the costs of, of that project are pretty significant, approaching $40 million. So this would be a way to help fund, provide matching funds for other grants, so we can get some of that done and, and provide for our future there. Also, the Advanced Nuclear Demonstration Project, I heard you all talking about that earlier. SEDC's taken the lead on the recruitment efforts for that via a huge economic boon to our county. So again, another way to support that organization, doing that good work for all of us. So just to summarize, in addition to the 4% statewide tax, we can also do general purpose tax in increments of a half percent up to two, specific purpose tax up to two, and an economic development tax in increments of a quarter percent not to exceed one, any combination up to three pennies. There's lots of combinations. We can add a 1% general purpose tax for public safety and economic development initiatives. The county and 50% of the municipalities must approve the resolution to approve the tax. Maybe voted on during a special election, can be made permanent by a vote of the citizens or a resolution adopted by the county and majority municipalities. Again, the support for revenue measures is higher than we may think it is, as we saw with some of those elections last year. Current revenues are insufficient to meet demand. A 1% sales and use tax would fully fund ambulance, joint communications, with additional revenue available to support other public safety expenses and/or increases in the costs, as well as providing a portion to support economic development, would leave us with a still 1% additional tax that we could impose for specific purposes, infrastructure and/or economic development. And finally, the time is now. We've got a lot of large-scale projects moving in. This is the time to capitalize on some of those revenues from those organizations who also utilize these services and who are going to, we're going to see an increase in the need for these services as they come into the community. So why are we here? So we sent out, there's a, a number of resolutions floating around that you've seen. Some of those were developed just for discussion purposes, really to show what it looks like, various options. This is, is, is one that has, has been discussed and, and kind of in the intergovernmental group has received a lot of support. So the next steps, again, review this. We're doing this now with, with you and the councils. There have been those discussions going on. Legal review of contracts and agreements to identify changes needed. Pass the resolution by July 15th, so we're up against a timeline here if we want a November 2nd special election. Cindy Lane, our clerk, has been fantastic in helping out, has a, a great timeline together that shows how we can get this done on time for the, the proposition on the November 2nd ballot. And then just market the benefits to the public about stable funding for public safety and, and economic development. So with that, that's kind of the, the full intergovernmental presentation, and I'll certainly stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ryan. Commissioners, any questions for Ryan? Go ahead, Mr. Schoenfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Ryan. I appreciate this presentation. I have a couple of questions. So first, and this actually may be for John Delian as well, but how does this tax already, or work in conjunction or against with those already taxed districts like Castle Rock, if they're using some of the tax funding already for, from the special district for ambulance services? Are those citizens going to be essentially double taxed, or how, how does that flush out?
Well, I, I will certainly. Well, I will certainly allow Mr. Daleon to address that, should you have any response. I know that we are asking those questions and getting some feedback on that.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, so those are, those kinds of thought processes are, I think, being fleshed out by the different entities. Because the way the resolution is currently written, the different variations, the, the way that that money would be used, each entity can sort of make their determination on how they apply. So for example, with WAMSET, they've got their ambulance situation, which is different than other entities. So obviously their money wouldn't be going in the same direction. So it's important as the different governmental bodies come together and look at a potential MOU. I think that might be the primary spot where you identify where that'll be located. So, you know, I think there's, there's, there are ways to accomplish not having somebody sort of hit twice. And specifically when you're talking about Castle Rock, there's of course, as you know, a hospital district. And so it's up to them to determine how to best use their money for, for their district and they, in other words, adjustments can be made between the governmental entities and the districts so as to accomplish what each entity feels is fair and just for those that they represent. Does that help?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So obviously it needs more than half of the municipalities in agreement. Does everybody agree? Where were you standing with the other municipalities? I know Rox Springs and Green River are on board. It sounds like WAMSET is as well.
So again, I'm going to dodge as best I can and say, I'm certainly not willing to speak for any of those entities. I do know in our intergovernmental discussions that there has been support from, from various people in those organizations. That's really all I can say at this point.
Roy, I see you want to answer. Either one of us can.
Yeah, I'm from sitting in on those meetings. I happen to help take the lead on this because Jeff was unavailable their last two or three weeks. And so like, I think we can safely say WAMSET or his voice can support. And Superior has clearly voiced support. And now granted, once you sit in front of a council, because these are just, we have basically, it's a subcommittee in the center governmental group. It could change because you never know what the whole will do. But those outside communities have expressed support from at least the people representing them in the meetings.
Thank you. Go ahead. Commissioner Shanefield.
So in we, in some of your slides, you had a 0.75%. And then in other ones, it was the full 1%. What is, I guess, what is the group wanting to do and how do they want to move forward? I was taking the numbers and looking at numbers from the 0.75% because that was what was originally given to me. And then the last one has 1%. So.
I think I, Ryan, can I take that?
Please.
Okay. And if I speak wrong, please feel free to correct me. Lauren, I think the whole, the intergovernmental group's recommendation would be the 1%. And as we get to this formal decision, there's like, there's like, I have like five resolutions in front of me of how it could go, to be honest. It's kind of like a Jenga board over here of resolutions, to be honest. But they're, because I guess the first thing we have to decide is there's two different taxes we're looking at. A general purpose taxes. One is the 0.25 that is specific for economic development. Then there is the, the public safety element of it, which could be 0.5 or 0.75. But for it to be 0.75, it has to be coupled with the 0.25 to make the one. Am I correct, Ryan, under statute? If we couple it together, because you can't have 0.5 and 0.25. And then the last piece of that, Lauren, is the third piece of this is, do you want the resolutions to stand separate? Or like have a specific vote, vote for the, a specific vote for the economic development tax and a separate vote, or would you like them tied together? So there's a lot of options. I think the intergovernmental group as a majority, and there have been some dissenting, you know, discussions during that group. But the majority have felt like going 1% and tying, doing one initiative on the ballot to do both tied together is the way to go.
So the 0.75% for public safety and 0.25% for. Okay, thank you.
And like I said, there are other options. You could go separate ballot issues. You could go and, and I even have a couple of different wordings in some of the resolutions. One more general and one more that kind of is a little more specific, but is still provides some looseness in the policy of the concept, which is one of the concerns we had as we went through. So lots of options and possibilities. But I do think the majority of the group has felt the go with the 1% on one initiative or one tax base.
Thank you.
Ryan, is that fair?
I think that's a good understanding of the statute. That's, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
I've learned way more about this than I ever thought I would have in the last three weeks. Thank you.
Further questions at the moment, Mr. Shanefield?
No, but I will retain the, the ability to ask later because I have a few more that are brewing there.
Yeah, that's why we're here. So there's no reason. I think Commissioner Toman earlier, did you have a question?
Yes, Eden Valley had a concern. They are not, Eden Valley is not an incorporated city. They wondered if they would be able to utilize any of the funds. And I see you had it listed, but I presume that would have to come through the county if they were to receive any, any of the unincorporated could apply through the county share, correct?
Correct. And they do that. I believe they could do that through their, through the budget requests and stuff. That's one avenue, that type of thing. But yeah, it would take a request right now, the way the statute reads. The money would be divided up based on populations by cities, towns and counties. And there's not anything there yet for unincorporated areas. You're exactly right, Mr. Toman.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions, commissioners? One of the things, don't leave, Ryan. We did present some stuff up there that was in relation to economic development and SEDC. And we do have a membership of SEDC here. Ms. McDonald's here as well as Mr. Bingham. And I would ask them if they have any, would like to add anything to the presentation. And if they would, please come up to the podium. But if not, that's fine as well. But I didn't want to leave you out because this is an economic development. Thank you, Eric.
So if we want to be serious about economic development, I think we need to do the proper funding mechanism for it. $90,000 a year is not going to get us to where we want to be. And especially with the Middle Baxter project. It's going to require a lot amount of dollars to construct infrastructure for that. And then the other thing is, is we don't have what businesses really request a lot of the times are incentives. And Commissioner Toman had mentioned that in her comments earlier. That's important and we don't have the money or funds to offer businesses incentives. And so I think this could be a funding model that would provide that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. Questions for Mr. Bingham before you leave, Eric?
Run away.
Any questions for Mr. Bingham? All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Ryan? Thank you very much. With that, I will turn the floor over to Commissioner Lloyd to begin to work through some steps that we need to discuss before, as we move forward. So Commissioner Lloyd?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think what we need to determine as a commission whole of how we send this resolution forward. And so, you know, like I said, there are a couple of options out there. I think the first one to decide to get there is our, as a whole, are we in favor? I'm not taking a vote, just kind of, we'll have to get to the resolu, you know, get to the motion in a little bit. But as a whole, are we comfortable moving with both the public safety tax at any level and the economic development? General purpose tax or as a whole, are we comfortable with that? So can I ask everyone for their opinion, Doc? Thank you, Chairman Doc. But so Mary, what's your gut feelings? Are you in favor of both of these?
Yes, I feel they are something we need to pursue at this time.
Lauren?
I am in favor. I think that Eric hit the nail on the head with economic development. And it's very clear that our community is very passionate about our ambulance services and our public safety. And we need to ensure that they continue.
And Chairman Wendling?
Yeah, I'm very much in favor of it. And I think Eric and Commissioner Shanefield both hit the nail on the head for economic development. And I've always been a proponent of it and need to find a way to make it possible to move with support in the direction it needs to go as we look for economic development opportunities. But even more so, it's huge that we have the, we provide the opportunity for existing businesses for some assistance or for expansion, which through small grants and that, that this may be able to provide for them and that type of thing. So I think it's just a huge, huge opportunity for us to move in the direction to diversify our economy. Because I'm a firm believer, we, we gotta find a way to move through the ups and downs, the busts and booms that we're experiencing. Plus, when we hit hurdles such as we have with COVID-19, we're continuing to be able to move forward. And as Commissioner Toman has expressed, the lost revenue in the county. Well, the only way we're going to get that back is by having business come in and, and be able to survive and, and continue to grow and provide that revenue. So we need to diversify more so than anything else. And I think SEDC has, with that group, is working in the right direction. But we need to provide greater support and we can do this with this particular proposition. So I'm supportive of both being on the ballot. Commissioner Lloyd?
So that was, so no matter what I feel, there would be a majority that would move forward with that. So, and we'll talk about, I'll be honest, I struggle with this a little bit. I'm trying to remain neutral as I lead the discussion and I will. I just have a couple of questions that I have asked and we've discussed that I don't feel have answered or can't be answered. I worry a little bit about the perception of some of the folks in Green River of already having the mill levy with green Castle Rock. And, and even though it's not specific in that mill levy for ambulance, they've been very public in saying they have to use that mill levy to cover ambulance. So I worry a little bit about it. It does feel it could be seen as a double tax. I also worry about the timing. I feel like we're doing this in a rush. I wish it was, I think I'd feel more comfortable if we were looking at a different date and we were having to hold and incur the cost of a special election during a period like this. But I will move with the whole group because I do see some benefit in this. And I also think the important thing to remember about this is, this is allowing the public to make a vote and to make a statement. And I don't think this decision's mine to make. Because I would like, since we can't put it out to the public, I want to give the public the opportunity to speak and, and share their opinions. And if there's anything missing in this process, I wish we could have a special meeting to bring in the public members to share their opinion. That would be one thing I would like to have, but within our timeframes, that's limited. So, so that's kind of where I stand. But I'm willing to move forward and let the people have a choice. And I also want to throw out there, I do worry about it and how this could affect because that would create a six penny. And then next year, when we go to look at the ballot on the, on the additional 1%, that will move it to seven cents. And I worry about, could this move affect the ability to pass a six penny? So those are some of my concerns. But I do see there's benefit and I really want to let the people make a decision. So, so with that being said, I guess, since we want, and is everyone good with it being on one ballot initiative? Anyone opposed to one ballot initiative? And is everyone good with going with the recommendation of 1% with 0.75 going to public safety and 0.25 going to economic development being on the same, on the same initiative? Okay. So I think that's the resolution we would go with, John. So John, I'm going to ask you for help just to make sure in my plethora of resolutions, I get the right one. And I think, and they're all the same resolution number. So, but I think it would be the resolution number 2107cc01, which would be, and tell me if I'm right, John. Resolution approving proposition for imposition of an additional 1% general purpose sales tax and excise tax in Sweetwater County, state of Wyoming. Said proposition to be placed on the, the election ballot on November 2nd, 2021. With the whereas clause that says, the one that we had presented, it was the exact same, but what was brought back to us by the group as a whole was one additional whereas clause. Well, actually, one whereas clause has stated, added recent revenue reductions and escalating costs to place funding for public safety agencies as an immediate concern of Sweetwater County. Public safety agencies includes, but is not limited to ambulance service providers, the Sweetwater County Joint Combined Communication Center and other local government tax supported public safety organizations. And then there was one other, a couple of other small additions to what John's original proposition was on page two, under number three, four, under the therefore section. The purpose of the taxes for general revenue to fund ambulance subsidies, the Sweetwater County Joint Combined Communication Center and other local government tax supported public safety organizations and economic development. And the only other change from John's original resolution that the group requested was under the ballot initiative is we were going to swat, first, our comment, it was, it read economic development and public safety. But it swapped on the new proposition, which would be shall Sweetwater County, Wyoming be authorized to impose an additional 1% tax portion, tax aid portion of the tax proceeds shall be used for public safety and economic development for a term of four years. So John, is that the right resolution that I think the group was looking at?
That is the, that is the resolution, I think, Commissioner. Lloyd, I think you described that well and the, the the only additional language, of course, it does say that Sweetwater County and the incorporated municipalities receiving distribution may expend not to exceed 25% of the amount received for the purpose of economic development. That is one of the therefore clauses. So I think that, I think that covers the scope of the content well.
Hang on a second before we move on. What we're going to do now, as long as you know, you have, you think you have the right resolution, Commissioner?
I do.
All right. Before, before we do that, let's, let's do this. Let's move. I'll take the floor back.
You can have it.
Thank you. And at this point in time.
I'm pretty good at that.
Would you, because I've got the ones that's got to be signed here. Will you be able to tell me, John, which is exactly the one? And what, what we'll do is I'll go back to questions. And then okay, with this, are there any questions regarding the commissioners, regarding the presentation? And not on the resolution so much, but if you do have one from Mr. Commissioner Lloyd to present us, Commissioner Toman?
Well, I have a question. You mentioned something about a term of four years. What was that for?
That's how long the tax would be in place. We would have to re-vote for the initiative in four years.
Oh, okay.
Correct, Ryan? Yes. And that was put in place so it wasn't seen as a, a permanent tax led us to evaluate the monies coming in and where we're at.
Allows, allows the people to, you know, that goes under taxation without representation. So if they want to be represented. Other questions, Commissioner Shanefield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure if this has been discussed, but I know in this.
Excuse me. Your voices are overriding what we're doing up here at the bench. So I'm sorry. Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Shanefield.
I don't know if this has been discussed. I'm sure it has. But in our six penny discussions, we had conversation around marketing and education for the community. What is the plan moving forward? With marketing being as this is such short turner. With marketing being as this is such short turnaround, and we need our public to have a full understanding about what they're voting for in this special election.
I can take that and then ask for Ryan for additional comments. I know that we have discussed the need to market it. And I think what we'll see, and we've already discussed some of the issues that we could have in marketing it and the sharing it, and really past marketing and educating people of why this could be important. And I think the next step of this group will be to reconvene and develop, further develop the strategy in sharing the information. Is that fair, Ryan? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Yep. And then I also would like to have conversation around the cost of this special election and what it's going to cost the county and how that's going to be handled as well.
I'm sorry, Clerk Lane, go ahead and take the floor on that, please, on the cost of the election?
I think it's shared, but.
Actually, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, actually, I believe it says that the county will cover the cost of the election. I'd have to defer to county attorney's office with that. And it, it will probably cost up around $100,000.
It was indicated to me by one of the entities that there was potential they would look at splitting, but I don't think we've gone, you know, splitting costs, but we haven't had that formal discussion. Once again, Ryan has had a fair statement. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Ryan, we've been, Ryan Doc and I have both been on that group, and that's why I defer Ryan, just to make sure we have a, we're right. I'm right.
Go ahead.
So, and I don't know if this has been figured, this is something for John, but is the economic development, does that go into a general fund? How does that work?
So, the, as Commissioner Lloyd identified, by putting them both in together, then it would go into the general fund. And the, the key, as, as I read to you, is that each governmental entity cannot exceed the 25% in economic development. So it doesn't, I didn't see anything that says it would have its own area.
Okay, so would that be attainable through an MOU or an agreement with the entities?
Yes, if you, if you wanted to have specific amounts, yes, and that would, that would start looking at your MOU language.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, with this, I think, you know, it's rather lengthy, but I think it's important that because there, many of them are floating around, people want to know exactly which resolution we're talking about. So I would ask that, I'll pass this back down. I'll ask Commissioner Lloyd. I hope you have some liquid there to help with the dry voice, but I'm going to ask you to read resolution, the resolution This is the one that we're asking the commissioners to approve today.
Correct.
Do you have a copy? Will you pass it?
Will you pass it? That was my copy to make sure we, we're all on the same page.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd like you to please read that, and then we'll go through formal adoption.
It would be resolution number 21-07-CC-01. Resolution approving proposition for an imposition of an additional 1% general purpose sales and excise tax in Sweetwater County, state of Wyoming. Said proposition to be placed on the election ballot on November 2nd of 2021. Whereas the Wyoming legislature has provided pursuant to Wyoming, WS Wyoming statute 3915204AI for counties to impose an excise sales tax not to exceed 2% up until, upon retail sales of tangible personal property, admission and services made within the county. The purpose of the tax is for general revenue herein, herein after referred to as tax. And whereas the Wyoming legislature has provided pursuant to WS 39-16-204AI for counties to impose an excise tax, use tax upon sales and storage, use and consumption of tangible personal property. The purpose of which is for general revenue herein after referred to as tax. And whereas Sweetwater County is presently imposing 1% of a potential 2% of the general revenue excise tax authorized by WS 39-15-203AI, W Wyoming statute 3915-204AI, WS Wyoming statute 39-16-203AI, and Wyoming statute number 39-16-204AI. And Sweetwater County desires to increase the current general revenue sales use tax from 1% to 2%. And whereas the outcome of the vote on this ballot proposition as proposed herein will not affect the continuation of the 1% general revenue sales tax currently being assessed. And whereas Sweetwater County has further determined that it is necessary to submit to the qualified electors of the county of the proposition for an imposition of the additional 1% tax herein after sometimes referred to as the tax proposition. And whereas recent revenue reductions and escalating costs have placed funding for public safety agencies as an immediate concern of Sweetwater County. Public safety agencies include, but is not limited to, the ambulance service providers, the Sweetwater County Joint Combined Communication Centers, and other local government tax-supported public safety organizations. And whereas recent revenue reductions have also placed economic development as an immediate concern of Sweetwater County. Economic development includes, but is not limited to, increasing employment, stimulating industrial activity, augmenting source of tax revenues, fostering economic stability, and economic diversification. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Sweetwater County, Wyoming, state of what county Wyoming, state of Wyoming, that having determined that the current, the current general revenue sales use tax should be increased from 1% to 2%, the Sweetwater County Board of County Commissioners hereby agree to place the additional 1% general revenue tax on the November 2nd, 2021 ballot, and further endorse, hereby endorse, adopt, and approve the procedure set forth in WS 3915-203AI, WS 39-15-204AI, WS 39-16-203AI, and WS 39-16-204AI. The tax shall be imposed upon the retail sales of tangible personal property, admissions and services within Sweetwater County, and upon sales and storage, use and consumption of tangible personal property within Sweetwater County. Three, the purpose of the tax is for general revenue to fund ambulance subsidies, Sweetwater County Joint Combined Communication Center, and other local government tax-supported public safety organizations and economic development. Four, the Sweetwater County Board of County Commissioners hereby directs the county clerk to notify the city of Green River, the city of Rock Springs, the town of Barrowell, the town of Granger, the town of Superior, and the town of Womcutter that this resolution has been approved, and to request their concurrence with this resolution. If at least 50% of the governing bodies of the incorporated municipalities within the county submit a concurring resolution prior to or on July 15th, 2021, the county clerk shall place this proposition upon the November 2nd, 2021 election ballot, WS 2221-103. Number five, if the requisite amount of concurring resolutions are submitted prior to or on July 15th, 2021, the following shall apply. A, the following proposition shall be listed on the ballot. Shall Sweetwater County, Wyoming be authorized to impose an additional 1% tax? A portion of the tax proceeds shall be used for the public safety and economic development for a term of four years. B, the ballot shall contain the language for the sales, for the county sales and use tax against the county sales and use tax, and a portion of the tax proceeds shall be used for economic development. Six, if the proposition is successful, the proposition shall be submitted at the second general election following the election at which the proposition was initially approved, and at the general election held every four years. And, and four years thereafter until defeated in accordance with WS 39-15-203 letters AI and C, and WS 39-16-203AI and section C. Or the tax may be continued by resolution and ordinance as fall allowed in WS 39-15-3203, eight letters AI and F, and WS 39-16-203, sections AI and F. We're getting there. Number seven, if the proposition, I think I can round it up and just need a number seven, if the proposition to impose or continue the taxes defeated, the proposition shall not again be submitted to the electors of the county for at least 11 months pursuant to WS 3915-203AI and D, and WS 39-16-203AI and D. If the proposition is approved by the qualified electors, the Board of County Commissioners and the incorporated municipalities within the county shall impose an excise tax upon retail sales of tangible personal property, admissions, and upon sales and storage, use and consumption of tangible personal property within Sweetwater County of 1% in addition to the already existing 1%. Number nine, the tax shall be implemented and enforced pursuant to Wyoming statutes title 39, taxation and revenue, chapter 15, sales tax, article 1, sales, state sales tax, except for WS 39-15-102A, a title 39, taxation and revenue, chapter 16, use tax, article 1, state use tax. Insofar as it relates to the sales and use taxes, except the name of the county as the taxi, taxing agency shall be substituted for that of the state and an additional license to engage in business shall not be required if the vendor has been issued a state license pursuant to law. Number 10, an amendment made to title 39, article 1 of chapter 15, or chapter 15, or any amendments made to title 39, article 1 of chapter 16, or chapter 16 within the Wyoming statutes not in conflict, shall become part of this resolution. Number 11, prior to the effective date of imposition of the tax, the county clerk shall ensure that a contractual relationship is in place with the state of Wyoming Department of Revenue to perform all functions incident to the administration of the sales tax. Number 12, the amount subject to the tax shall not include the amount of any sales tax imposed by the state of Wyoming. Number 13, the effective date of the tax shall begin is April 1, 2022. In the case of a vendor selling from a printed catalog, the new tax rate shall take effect on the first day of the calendar quarter following 120 days notice provided to the vendor, W state statute 3915-20CC. Number 14, Wyoming, sorry, Sweetwater County and the incorporated municipalities receiving distribution may expand not to exceed 25% of the amount, of the amount received for the purposes of economic development. And number 15, should any part or provision of this resolution ever be judicially determined to be invalid or unforeseen, unenforceable, such determination shall not affect the remaining parts of the provisions hereof, the intention being that each part or provision of this resolution is severable. It would be passed, approved, and adopted this sixth day of July 2021, and to be signed by the chairman of the board.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Appreciate that. One of the things when taking time to read through it gives an opportunity for also for commissioners to take a little more deep thought on it. So my question, commissioners, any questions on what you heard or read following along in this resolution? Nothing there? I do have one. I would, Mr. DeLeon, on number 10, on the third page?
Yes.
Any amendment made to title 39, article 1 of chapter 15, or chapter 15? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Just to me was a question that just might have been another chapter other than 15, but thank you. All right, any other questions, commissioners? All right, we're to that point of commissioners, what's your pleasure in authorizing the chairman to sign?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Shanefield?
I'll make a motion to accept resolution 21-07-CC-01 as presented and allow the, or authorize the chairman to sign.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and authorize the chairman to sign. Is there a second?
It's your resolution.
Well, I know, I'm just part of the committee. I'd prefer you second it, Mary.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to go on the record that I am concerned that the timeliness of this, and, and I don't think there are, I think there's great intent, but I don't know if all the mechanisms are in place that need to be to actually go to election. Though I will support it to support the intergovernmental group as a whole, I do have concern with this resolution, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Appreciate your honesty and your thoughts as well. Any other discussion, commissioners?
I would just like to make a comment that I'm glad that we're not putting the tax in a, in a property tax on the backs of our mineral industries, because they have carried the load. And I think this is a more equitable tax, even though we're not in favor of more taxes. It's a more fair way for people to be able to vote on it and to be able to share in the, in the load. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? I'll share, just share one that it just directly goes in line that it's purely been demonstrated by the state, especially in their desire to eliminate and cut direct distribution to small towns and into the county. So it's, it's a message being sent by the state that if we want to do anything, they're not going to help. Absolutely no help. If we want to do anything, we're going to have to do it ourselves as a county and as cities and in incorporated areas. And in order for that to happen, we've got to step up and take care of our communities and take care of providing these necessary services to everyone, as well as attract industry here, so that the county revenue can get to a point where, you know, maybe we don't have to depend on the state anymore. I wouldn't say annex from Wyoming, but not depend on them. So, but anyhow, I, I support this 110%. The timeline, I agree with Commissioner Lloyd, you know, rather quick, rather coming down on us. But you know what? This proposition was coming forward anyhow. And it still gives the people in the county the time to ask questions, to learn more about it and what's going to happen between now and the vote is time for people to ask questions. It's time for us to get out and, and support this initiative and this proposition, not only as cities and towns, but as a county. So I, I have a strong belief, and I always have in Sweetwater County, that anything we want done, we've had to do it ourselves. And I think that's demonstrated over the years in the things that we have put upon ourselves in previous special tax initiatives and that type of thing. So I know, I know everybody's anxieties that moving too fast, that type of thing, now, it was coming. It was coming. It was just a matter of taking the step forward and look to somebody such as the town of Green River through the intergovernmental thing and say, hey, help us with this, take the heavy lift. And Green River did with the assistance of, of Ryan Rust, as well as other administrators in the, in that, and work side by side with them, so we could do it jointly. But I think it was, it's coming. We have time to think about it. And I truly believe if we want Sweetwater County to, to have the things we feel that our residents deserve, we're not going to get help from the state, we're not going to get help from the federal government. They won't borrow us our, their, their money printing machine. We've checked on that already. So we got to do it up by ourselves. And we can. And I believe in the citizens of Sweetwater County. Any other discussion, commissioners? Call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Abstention? Nobody? Motion carries. We are moving forward with the proposition. The cities, both councils have now something to work with. And the continued work of the intergovernmental is never more critical than it is right now. never more critical than it is right now. Thank you very much, commissioners. Thank you, Ryan, for presenting. And thank you, Mr. Lloyd, for your work next to him to help bring this forward. With that, moving through on our agenda, next thing up is the consideration adding Juneteenth as a federal holiday. And to present that is Mr. McLean. And he does have some data. I think we had some in our packet as well. So, Mr. McLean, good morning again. Thank you. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, county commissioners. With the recent passing of June nineteenth, I know there were some questions from the board. And I think there's two essential things that we need to address. The first one of those, I think, has to do with the specific language of the existing county policy. And so we'll discuss that first. And I think the second item is regarding the board's position with respect to June nineteenth as a as a holiday for county employees. First, with respect to the policy. The, and this should be included in your packet, but this would be page sixty three of the manual. Item twelve, under the existing holidays includes any holidays as proclaimed by the board or other state or federal official. And I think the intent was to reflect some of the language from the statute. But in in my opinion, that's overly broad. I think it'd be simpler if we just say other holidays is proclaimed by the board. That way you have time to review it and 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 understand fully what the implications are. So that's that's a recommendation I'd like to make. And and if the board is in accord, I'll bring it back for adoption at the next meeting with some of the other board policy changes that we have already lined up. One of the things, just to to point out, it's in in looking at county holidays, obviously, there's a number of considerations. Obviously, the there's the the message and and the support that the holiday represents. The social value of it. But for the county, there's also a number of issues. As you know, most of the county are arm of the state functions, the county clerk, county assessor, county treasurer, county attorney, all perform duties under state law. And there's a lot of nexus with state government in those areas. In addition to that, the county clerk's office and and other offices work closely with the banks. And car dealers and other places in terms of conducting business, transfers of titles and deeds and and mortgages and so on and so forth. So I think you see in the statutory intent with respect to holidays that nexus between approved holidays and bank holidays and and those things. And so I had Ashley call around to a few banks, a local bank, a regional bank and more of a national bank. And those banking officials indicated that that they have are recognizing June nineteenth as a bank holiday. I do not know if that's every bank, but I, of those three, again, a local, regional, national bank are recognizing that as a as a day off. A number of years ago, I think back in two thousand eight, two thousand three, the state adopted a, actually in two thousand three, adopted a bill designating the third Saturday in June as a state holiday in recognition of June nineteenth and and the end of slavery. The current governor, Governor Gordon, says, you know, considering that in terms of having that as a paid day off, but as of yet, that has not been approved. In your packet, you should see a list, looks like this, of kind of a current summary of the current holidays. There are the common ones. And then I've included at the bottom those days that in the last year or so, the boards approved either as a floating holiday or as an additional holiday by board action for Christmas Eve. And New Year's Eve, so on and so forth. So that'll give you a good summary of where we're at right now. Again, just to summarize, the policy change, I think, is relatively straightforward. And I would strongly urge the board to consider just changing that language so that it be by board proclamation. You're always free to follow the proclamations of other officials if you so choose. And so I'd encourage that we make that change. And then with respect to, with respect to the holiday, I guess there's a number of considerations in that regard. We could replace an existing holiday. We could add a holiday. We currently don't have a paid day in June, so. And it is a holiday that's recognized at the federal level and with some banking officials, so. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Questions for Mr. McLean, commissioners?
Mister Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Lloyd.
Yeah, Gary, under, Mr. McLean, under our our current policy, I want to just pull that up. I zoomed past it. It states, number twelve, any other holidays is proclaimed by the board or other state or federal official. I do agree with you that we need to change the language that language of that. So I guess my question, though, is until that's changed, are we kind of stuck under policy since it has been declared by a federal official, a national holiday that we have to observe that based upon policy?
Yeah. So if you read it, it says the county observes the following holidays and then it lists those. And as proclaimed by the board or or other state or federal officials, so I I would say yes, just in terms of language. But obviously, the board's free to amend that as you choose.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Other questions?
So, Mister Chairman, would it make sense to then push this back to the next agenda on our next meeting and so that we're not violating our own policy potentially?
Good catch. Good catch.
Yeah. So in in terms of adopting any changes to the policy, we would do that by resolution. I'd draft a resolution with some language. I think the point today is really to decide what direction and any other options the board would like to see so that we have everything in front of the board to to make those changes, if any, and make those decisions.
Very good. Other questions for Mr. McLean? So I think first on the plate regarding this item is the change in policy. As far as we need that in a motion, do we not to direct you to make that change?
I would bring that forth if if the board would like to consider that. If I would bring it as a resolution, the board could they could vote on that resolution at that time.
Okay, so I guess the question then is, board members are, please indicate if you're in favor of Mr. McLean making that change in policy and bring it forward in a resolution. You're all in favor of that? Okay.
Yeah.
So then therefore regarding this agenda item, for lack of better words, I sense that we probably should, John, would be postponed till our next meeting? Postpone or table?
Either one works.
Other one. I like, I like postpone. Okay, so commissioners, is there any issue postponing this agenda item till our next meeting? No problem at all? That doesn't take a vote, does it? No, okay. Lloyd, Commissioner Lloyd, you okay with that? All right. So what we'll do is look forward to seeing not only the resolution and change policy, but then also we'll talk about the day becoming a holiday, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it. And by the way, I think, you know, the stuff you provided in the packet, even the historical stuff was very good and and very well put together. And I appreciate you doing that because it does bring some thought forward as we move into this holiday process. So thank you very much for that. Ms. Ashley, agenda item for the next meeting, please. This will be on it. Okay, thank you. As we move forward, next up will be request for the Board of County Commissioners to approve a resolution to enter into fire restrictions within Sweetwater County. And to present that is our fire chief or fire warden, Mike Bornasian. Morning, Mike.
Good morning, commissioners.
First thing off, I want you to know I'm trying this meeting to keep my mouth real close to the mic. So everybody can hear me on everything. And I've been watching my fellow compadres and they've been doing a very, very good job.
You have to be careful because it'll poke you in the eye if you're too short.
I hear you. I hear you. Thank you. Go ahead. The floor is yours.
So what I have before you is a a request to enter into fire restrictions within Sweetwater County and incorporated private lands within our county. And the reason I bring this to you on the agenda today is because the the conditions, the conditions out there merit, I believe, at least the discussion and an action to do the, do everything we can to be, to do our due diligence in preventing ignitions, especially in the wildland fires across Sweetwater County. It's not one that I I'm happy to bring before you. I I personally do not like to restrict anything to the public and their use and how they enjoy the outdoors and and do their recreating and go about their business. However, because of the the drought conditions, not just within our county, but southwest Wyoming, the current fuel conditions and in continued weekly meetings with our federal partners, other counties in the state, especially in southwest Wyoming. It is, it is evident that we are, we are at the parameters that I believe and we believe collectively, and I have Chief Kitchener here as well. I'd like to recognize him from Fire District One. That it, it would be the right thing to do would be to enter into fire restrictions at stage one. In doing that, I'd like to also point out that we met as a chiefs, fire chiefs within Sweetwater County, all those that were in attendance, and it was unanimous that we bring this before you today. The language was changed this year. Previous year's language for restrictions was kind of all across the board. So working with the state Wyoming State Forestry Division, they were able to adopt a standard language with the state that mirrors our federal partners so that we all have the same restriction, the same classification of restriction and the same limiting factors within that restriction, which I think is great. So currently, the Ashley National Forest is in fire restriction stage one. They went into effect last month. They they go early as usual. So it affects within Sweetwater County, the shoreline of the gorge. The Bureau Land Management wishes to go into fire restrictions stage one as well within within southwest Wyoming, the High Desert District area. And they've been gracious enough to try and time that with with our our decision and some of the other counties. You went to county, went in early. You went to county, went into stage one fire restrictions countywide on June thirtieth. The reason they went in early is because the Utah folks like to come across the border and buy all their fireworks and they were trying to preempt any starts that were firework related. And I commend them for doing that. Teton County is also meeting today to discuss this as well as Carbon County. And those county fire wardens and county fire chiefs are also making the recommendation they go into fire restrictions as well as sublet. So all those that neighbor us are looking to meet with their commissioners today to request we go into stage one fire restrictions. I I really like that idea that we're we're trying to do this collectively together. So whether you're on our side of the border or their side of the border, and whether you're on private or public land, we all, we all are going to do this together. Currently, there is already, there's a standing fire ban on state lands. So it's illegal to have campfires on state lands already. So they're they're kind of already in their own, their own restriction year round. So there's two levels of restriction, stage one, stage two. We're talking stage one and the verbiage that you have before you. Basically, it bans fireworks, open campfires outside of a cleared area with a fire ring and incorporated campsites or on your private property. So with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you, chief. Any questions for Chief Bornasian, Commissioner Shaneville?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. How was the Fourth of July for the county? And how many fires did you see?
The Fourth of July, from the fire department perspective, was, we would say it was slow. We had very few starts from fireworks over the Fourth of July. And I believe seven fire-related, very small fires that we responded to collectively. We have a, we put together a task force, basically, of all the fire departments, dispatch, and we pre-planned the fourth and amongst all of us working together, that's about all we've had. Now, previous years, we've had over twenty. There's factors. We did have a little bit of rain. A rain shower came through. We were blessed with an increase in the relative humidity and and that light grass, which usually starts from the fireworks, probably had a little more moisture in it in most of the areas, especially on White Mountain. I know it did on some of the Green River side here. I think the other thing that played into that was an extended weekend. I personally believe the extended weekend puts more more recreationists and fireworks folks outside of town. The gorge, from what I understand, was extremely packed. I think when we have a holiday, particularly during the week, we have one day off, they're not afforded that opportunity to leave town and recreate. And I I think that's why we see an increase perhaps there during the week. But but overall, Commissioner Shaneville, it was, it was, it was fairly quiet. We, we had some other fires that kept us out all night long. We had two semis that decided to catch on fire within ten miles of each other on the Carbon County line. So it was driving into the sunrise, coming back yesterday morning. So our folks were busy just in other ways, power line, lightning.
Commissioner Shane, or Commissioner Toman?
How does this affect private property in the county?
How does it affect private property? It only affects private property within Sweetwater County.
So they could not have a fire even on their own private property, right?
They they could, they could. And I believe if you look at one of the items, I got my glasses in here somewhere. One of those items says you can, as long as it's in a campfire ring.
Yeah.
You have fifteen foot of clearance around. I I only campfires at residences or campsites within a firing center within a minimum of fifteen foot of cleared combustible vegetation. So it does not prohibit prohibit our public on their own property of having a campfire ring with cleared vegetation and enjoying that opportunity.
But B L M, that doesn't apply to them, does it? That fifteen foot fire ring?
Well, this, this is on private property.
Right, but I'm asking, does it also apply the same on B L M?
For the, for the B L M lands.
Right.
Campfires would only be within established campgrounds with a campfire ring.
Okay.
And that that's the same for the Ashley National Forest as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Toman. Any other questions, commissioners?
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Yeah, I just want to commend us for going into it. I know, I think, in one of your emails that you sent to Chief Bornasian, they had that this is significantly earlier than we usually discuss it. And I think in, I think just seeing the dryness, I think you're right. I think the other reason that we saw a reduction in fires is there was great education through social media of reminding people of the risks and dangers. And I think, I think that education helped. I'm also sitting on the Conservation District and they've wondered if we could eventually look at a county ordinance where we actually have fireworks stands have to post. These are the restrictions within the different areas that you may serve. So people know when they buy fireworks, hey, right now it's restricted in this area and this area. And I think that's something we can look as a long term solve, but I I I hate to restrict things to, but I think at this point is a needed necessity. So I commend your group for moving forward with this quicker than normal.
Yeah. And if I can, if I can reply to you, Commissioner Lloyd, we've, we've we, Carbon County, Sweetwater County, Teton County are asking that if you do agree to go into restrictions, that we not go until the ninth, excuse me, till the ninth of July to allow us forty eight hours to get that word out to the public and and do all we can, our due diligence of of making everyone aware that and, and do all we can, our due diligence of, of making everyone aware that we are entering into fire restrictions.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Any other questions, Commissioners? No further questions. Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding these fire restrictions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to enter into fire restrictions in the county effective July 9th.
Okay, we have a motion to to approve the fire restrictions for uh, going into effect on February 9th. That's Resolution Number 21-07-CC-02 for partial fire restrictions.
It would be July 7th, not February 7th.
Did I say February? I meant, well, and it, they won't go into effect till July 9th.
Right.
July 9th, thank you very much. So anyhow, for July 9th, we have a motion by Commissioner Toman as your second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion?
Chairman Winley?
Yes.
May I?
You may. Thank you.
One of the things that I would, I would ask that we try to do with this is when it's time to come out of restrictions, timing is very important as well. And that one of my concerns with going in is how quickly can we come out? If the BLM decides to come out and we have to wait two to three weeks for another commissioner meeting, that poses a concern for me because that while the BLM has been gracious to wait with us right now, I don't know that, that, that opportunity will be afforded uh, when it comes out or if we need to go to stage two uh, restrictions. It is going to be a long year. So that's, that's one of my concerns is how do we address going in and out? Um, and, and my other county commissioners, uh, excuse me, my other county fire wardens are having that very discussion as well. I know some of them have had uh, through some means, a way for the warden to work through the board so that when the BLM decides to come out or they say, hey, we, we got two days of a good rain. We don't need these restrictions at this time. We can come out sooner than later. So I just like to express that concern.
All right. Thank you very much. Any thoughts, Commissioners? Lloyd, Commissioner Toman?
Uh, Mr. De Leon, could we amend the motion to say subject to Chief Bournesian being able to uh, follow the lead of the federal agencies and get um, after the fact approval from the commission?
So, um,
Or ratification or something?
I believe that's what was done in uh, um, some other jurisdictions. Uh, I think there was some discussion about that. There are, uh, there's also some language that's um, that um, with the, with the land commission, they have their own rules and regulations and part of their rules and regulations uh, include that those moves um, um, contain uh, discussion with the, with the uh, this commission, with this board. And so that's, that was the balance that is, that is being worked out. Uh, there's some language saying it's, it's best fit with the bo- this board. Um, and then there's, there's the practical realities, I think, that, that uh, Mike is addressing. And so that's the balance that this, this board has to, to deal with. Does that answer your question?
That did not answer my question.
No, I, I understand where the dilemma comes in. I, I'm wondering, this is just for discussion. Let's, um,
Yeah.
There's got, is there a way that when it's time to come out and we don't meet as commissioners? Because the one option would be, hey, we're coming out and tomorrow, so we do a special meeting for tomorrow. Or maybe an option would be to allow coming out or even going to stage two restrictions based on the conversation with the fire warden and his two contact people, which would be his liaisons, which would be Jeff and myself, with their approval as two commissioners and then ratifying that decision at a next meeting. Does that make sense, John?
Does.
So would that have to be included as part of the motion or can we just make that agreement as Commissioners?
You can, you have both those choices?
I have those, both those options. Okay.
I could make it that my amendment to the motion, that we approve the fire restrictions with, with what? Help me.
You, you can make either one of those, those motions, uh, understanding the, the land commission uh, rules, um, and that the intent is to comply with that. So
Wouldn't be the land commission, it would be the uh, liaisons to the fire department. Right? Is that right, Mary? That help out any? It's awful wordy. We got a some way how, what I'm saying is we got some way how to allow us to go, you know, if we need stronger restrictions as our federal partners move forward and our neighboring counties need to be able to allow it to happen and then with support from, i.e. Commissioners and then ratifying it by the commission at the next meeting, those actions. So here's what I'd do, if I may, Commissioner Toman. Let's finish up on the resolution, prove it as it is, and then come back and, and make a notation or a motion that would allow going into further restrictions or coming out of restrictions to be allowed to occur with approval of liaisons and then ratified at the ne- next meeting. Does that make sense? Mike, does that make sense to you?
Yes, yes, sir, it does.
Commissioner Toman, does that make sense to you? Are you sure?
Yes.
You okay to 100% of that? John?
Mr. Chairman, I can identify some of the language that was discussed for your contemplation till the next meeting. Would you like me to do that?
Sure.
The language that was discussed, uh, which had not been included, but is what Commissioner Toman is addressing, is that said restrictions will remain consistent with Wyoming Bureau of Land Management restrictions in the event their restrictions become less restrictive than those identified herein. So you could certainly add to that, subtract to that as you uh, deem uh, consistent with the state land commission rules.
Well, state land commission.
And uh, and um, ratification processes.
Okay, very good.
I would just add, as they become less restrictive or more restrictive. So you cover both directions.
Right, we go into two.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, um, just, for any of the public maybe watching, it's, we all work collectively, the, the counties and our federal partners. And so the BLM is, is really the science behind whether we go and should go into restrictions. Their fuel modeling, resource capabilities and those kinds of things. So they, they help us make those decisions and it's a collect, collectively working together. We don't let them make those decisions for us or on our behalf, but we do work with them and use that science to help us following, uh, in step with them.
Okay. My comment would be is you're exactly right and that's the way we need to move. We can approve this resolution. I'll work with Mr. De Leon to bring back, because I don't think we'll come out of restrictions in two weeks. I don't see any heavy rains, any torrential rains or anything coming to move out of it. And I think at the next meeting, we'll have just a uh, item on the agenda, John, that we can assist with this resolution. And you and I'll do that. Is that okay, Commissioners? Very good, thank you. So going back to the original, um, I think all, all in favor, we said aye, opposed. There was nothing. So any for, any other comments? With that, thank you very much. Resolution's been passed.
We didn't vote, did we?
Oh, you didn't?
The motion, who made the second?
Okay.
Oh, Toman and Lloyd.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve, a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. You're exactly right, Commissioner Shanefield. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Oh, yeah. It's, you would think otherwise after all of this. Alrighty, with that, our next item on the agenda will be Cabo, consideration of social media, non-legal advertising. So with that, I think the last meeting, Commissioner Lloyd, we talked a little bit about that. And I see we do have some uh, social media representation here. So is that um, Mr. Aaron Bell, did he leave? No, there he is. Thank you. You're just hiding back here. Okay, Commissioner Lloyd, I'm going to turn to you bet. Do you mind if we take a five-minute break? All right, five-minute break. We'll be back. Call this meeting back to order, and our next item on the agenda is a Thank you, Mr. Aaron Bell. Commissioner Lloyd, any questions? Can I take a five-minute break? is the consideration of social media, non-legal advertising. You bet. Do you mind if we take a five-minute break? All right, five-minute break. We'll be back. And with us today, talk to us about possibly doing more of it, the county stuff, or including county stuff with social media, so we'd have an idea of what might cost us. With us today is, I believe, Mr. Aaron Bell. And Mr. Aaron Bell, if you'd like, come to the mic, introduce yourself.
Sure.
Introduce yourself and who you're with, please, when you get there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thanks for this opportunity to tell you a little bit about Sweetwater Now. I'm Dave Aaron Bell, and I'm the Sales Manager, and write a little content and all kinds of fun stuff. But I put together this little media kit for you. It kind of tells you a little bit about Sweetwater Now, just opportunities to advertise and things like that. But if I could just get you real quick to turn to page number five, the web stats, on the backside of that. Just to let you know, I mean, those numbers are kind of what Sweetwater Now hangs its hat on. It's kind of the bread and butter. It's our audience, essentially. Since COVID hit, and we created our separate COVID-19 landing page, our page views jumped, almost doubled in a year. We were averaging about 1.25 million before COVID. After that, we put up that landing page, and it's consistently now over 2.2, usually between 2.2 and 2.6 per month. So we're getting a ton of page views right now. A couple of factors have helped out, of course. The newspaper going to just once a week in Rock Springs. We're a 24/7/365 website, so we're constantly updating our news. We also created an email that brings organically to people's emails every single day, the newsletter that has all of the pertinent, the top news of the day before in it. All of it's clickable to the website and things like that. Social media, we just continue to grow and grow that. We're up to, I believe, 37,000 Facebook subscribers. We're over 10,000, I think 11,000 now on Instagram, and we're trying to do more with that. But that's, I just wanted to bring that page to your attention, just simply because, as I mentioned, that's the bread and butter of Sweetwater Now, is our audience. Throughout this packet, there's just some information about different ways to advertise and things like that. But I wanted to bring your attention to the last two pages where it has the sponsored content bundle, number one, and number two. And in just a couple of brief conversations I had with Cindy here over the last month, when she talked about doing this, I was trying to get a feel for maybe what your non-legal advertising might be. And I'm glad that Commissioner Lloyd brought up the the notion of wanting to let more people know about the special election, the special initiative that might be voted on. Those are types of things that would fit really nicely into what we call sponsored content. And sponsored content is essentially like a news article, it has a headline, it's got a feature photo, but it basically has whatever information you want to share with the public. There's no space limit, any of that. You guys can put as much information in there as you want. I also asked Cindy, you know, do you have kind of a rough idea about how much non-legal advertising you might do? And she said she didn't really have a, like a real clear picture, because you hadn't done a ton of it in the past. So I just put together these two bundles for you. Basically, one of them, bundle number one is it's an unlimited amount of original posts. So throughout the year, you guys can post anything you want. If you wanted to do some more sponsored content, more than you've been doing, you can do, you can put up as many as you'd like throughout the year. We'll give you two reruns per post. And then we also share all of that information free of charge on Facebook, so that's a little added value to the package. That comes out to $8,000, and we can actually bill that month by month to you. Or if you wanted it all in a lump sum, we can do that as well. The bundle number two is a little more restrictive. It limits you to one sponsored content post per month, along with two reruns. And then that also gets shared on Facebook as well. And then that package would be $6,000. Again, we could break that out monthly, or if you would like, we can do it all in one lump sum. Not really understanding where you guys are at as far as a marketing budget for things like this, I just put those numbers together. Whatever amount of money you think you guys might want to spend on this, I could actually create a third bundle for you that would be just a set dollar amount, and you guys can use that for whatever you'd like, whether it be original content posts, a post in five reruns, for example. You can kind of use it any way you want. And I would just take that money, and I would just track it for you. I would send you like a monthly report. This is what you used this month. This is what you have left, that type of thing. I've got a number of clients that have recently started using that type of advertising, just a bulk sum, and it's worked out really well for them. And I'll keep track of it on my end, if that's something that's easier for you all to do, and just give you reports on how that would work. So so that's, that's kind of where I'm at as far as presenting some sponsored content bundles to you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Aaron Bell. Commissioners, any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Toman.
Well, I don't have any questions, but this came about as, after our WCCA convention, we wanted to do some thank you types of things. And I talked to Sally, and we also talked about maybe being able to advertise some of our vacancies on some of our boards and things like that.
Sure.
So we would get broader exposure. I don't know with our limited budget, so I'm not, I'm not sure we'd be able to take on an annual type subscription, but I don't know. We could talk to the rest of the commission. Probably a per-item type of thing is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, and there again.
Until we kind of get used to it.
Sure. And there again, Commissioner Toman, I mean, if you, if you had a, had a bundle of, you know, whatever it might be, whatever dollar amount it might be, then we would just kind of track that throughout the year. You can, if you want to use it two times in a month, once in three months, that's entirely up to you.
We're into a negative bundle right now. Can you accept negative bundle?
I don't know if I can fudge the books that way.
Where did the public service announcements fit into this? Have to make a balance.
Right, yeah.
Balanced approach. You can only say good things about us, too. I forgot that part.
Good, just good PR. Anybody else? Anything else? Other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm often given all the credit for pushing social media aspects for for the commission use, but I will say, this discussion was actually led by Mary, and I just get the credit. So thank you, Mary. And, but I do think it's a great way to increase our viewership. And I do think it was a, and just getting the information out, I think, once again, it was a shame that the state legislature didn't pass the legislation to let us put our legal notices onto digital content, either the state, your county website, or into a, an online newspaper, just because unfortunately, the newspapers just don't have the reach they used to.
Yeah, and I mean, you still have the option to put it on digital formats, but you're just required by law to put it in the newspaper.
Correct.
Yeah. That's right. Yeah, I think, I think this commission, two years ago, and into today, has probably ventured more into how can we include our work, non-legal and even legal, probably in a efficient way, as well as cost-effective way, and involving it with social media, i.e. Sweetwater Now, Wyoming 4, and the rest. And and there's got to be a way, you know, but we need to know what is offered and what they look like, and then defining what it is we want to do based with, in the statutes and regulations and that. So but I'm excited about it, because at least we're talking about it, and we're inviting people in to tell us what they have. And then it gives us some time to think and see how we can mold it to fit. You know, it's kind of like putting a round pig into a square hole.
Yeah.
You know, based on the statutes and that type of thing. But I think down the road, and it's not too much longer, we could possibly see that statute modified to include online media as well.
I know they're working on it, for sure. We have actually a little lobby group down there that's kind of, kind of working on that as well, so.
You're going to have to get your lobby group one bigger, give them more money
Yeah.
than what the newspaper lobby group is.
I know.
And get it into the right legislators' pockets.
That was about, that was, that was an education, for sure.
At its finest. And the newspaper organization does a good job. I mean, they support the heck out of those legislators, and those legislators, for the most part, you know, they're strong in following through with who supports them. You can't blame them at all.
Yeah.
But it's just a game you're going to have to enter into. And we, truly on the county commission side, and I think I can speak freely for the association, feel very strongly that we need this opportunity, and it will save us money. I do know when we entered, when the counties, two years ago, when the association requested, what are the costs for counties to use legal newspaper? You know, for all the advertisement and stuff, and clerk's office put together for me, and the cost was nearly $120,000 a year that we spent. And that's, that's a lot of money out of our budget, you know. If you'd listened to a person this morning in public comment, you know, here we are, tightened budgets, reducing budgets, but which in turn reduce services to people in the community, but yet by statute, we're continued to be tied to spend $120,000.
Yeah, and along those lines, I mean, these, these figures that I've presented to you, they're just jumping off points. You know, we can work within whatever budget you might create to make this happen. We're certainly be very flexible with anything you guys need, so.
We appreciate that.
You bet.
Any other questions, Commissioners, comments? All right. With that, thank you for taking time out of your day, Dave, and coming and visiting with us, and
You bet.
we'll continue to keep you in the loop, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and you have a great day, and be safe.
Let me know if you need any more information, too.
Thank you. I'll just ask, is there any other social media out there that, you know, read the agenda, would like to present regarding Cindy?
I sent information to both Sweetwater Now and Wyoming 4 News, and I thought Wyoming 4 News would be here, but I don't.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Well, if they happen to get ahold of us, we'll, we'll put them on the agenda and listen to what they have to say as well. We're open to everything. Okay, thank you. We appreciate that. Our next agenda item going, moving forward is the sewage infrastructure master plan for Jamestown Real Vista Water and Sewer District. I believe we have a representative, Mr. Jespersen. How are you? Glad to see you again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, welcome. The floor is yours when you're ready, sir. Do you have any guests with you, Kyle? Kel, do you have any guests with you? All right, if some walk in, don't hesitate to invite them or introduce them. You might put one here at this desk for, there you go. Thank you.
Well, it's good to be here, Mr. Chairman. It's especially a privilege, Commissioner Toman, to stand in front of you for the first time, even though we've known each other since we were about, you know, maybe me this big. How's that?
Yeah.
All right. Commissioners, the purpose of my being here today is to, first of all, express my feelings about encouragement, about the fact that if the media got it right, you're revisiting the Six Penny referendum and beginning discussions to possibly resurrect that. That's extremely encouraging for us. We're hopeful that our project is still on that referendum, our sewer project. It's extremely important to us, as well as, I believe, to the county, to continue to pursue that in light of the current development that we're seeing in the area, on the western regions of the district. The Loves Truck Stop appears to be doing well. Looks like they're very healthy, and I see lots of trucks coming and going. And to my pleasure, very, very insignificant disturbance to the community. It's, it looks like they're going to be a good neighbor. We also have, of course, the Ranchview subdivision that's well on its way out of the ground. So the purpose, I think, for me being here is to kind of maybe let you know a little bit about where we've been, where we're at, and possibly where we're headed. Obviously, you remember, many years ago, we approached this board, some 12-plus years ago, and you assisted us in developing the very first master plan that got us over the threshold, that allowed us to ultimately build and construct and get that water line built from Joint Powers Water Treatment Facility out into the, to the district. And that has just caused an enormous amount of excitement to go on out there in terms of development, potential, property owners being able to use their properties. We do have water out at the very end there, and Ranchview subdivision, those pipes are now in the ground. They've been pressurized, disinfected, and they're ready for use. So that's coming in the very near future. I think we'll start seeing, if this board accepts that master plan and that flat subdivision, I'm sure that we'll start seeing some, some holes being dug out there in that region. So that's exciting. I'm sure that, uh, we'll start seeing some, some holes being dug out there in that region. So that's exciting. The, uh, the water is only part of that equation. Uh, we're going to be forced to look at the wastewater disposal uh, side of that equation now, uh, because it's, it's coming faster than we had ever anticipated. Um, and if we don't address it, uh, like you said earlier, Commissioner Wendling, uh, we're gonna have to do it ourselves. And if we don't address it, um, then we're going to stifle any development that's going to potentially occur in that area. Um, so we need to get on, on board with that. My board recognizes that need. In light of the timeframe that it takes to put these kinds of projects together, uh, we're still years down the road in making that happen, and we understand that. So we're going to want to push awfully hard right now to try and push forward as, as, as much as we can. The purpose, I guess, is to come before you today and at the back of this folder, the first section of this folder uh, is addressing that sewage wastewater transportation line. Now, keep in mind, a transportation line, that's just the line that gets it from there to here. Connecting to the city of Green River where that wastewater will be disposed of and processed and taken care of. We also have to look at the development of the collection systems. Now, as far as the immediate future is concerned, uh, those lands that could be served immediately are going to be all of those out there around the golf course in the Covered Wagon Park area. Um, those would be able to come online first because of the topographical nature of, of the land out there and the system that's going to be installed. As far as collection systems for the rest of the district, that's going to happen over a period of many years, uh, because we're gonna have to develop individual collection systems relevant to the separate elevations of those areas. All of that information has got to be put together. It has to be, uh, in an intelligent and decipherable manner before we can even hope to approach any of the funding agencies that might be available, uh, to help us with these projects. And that's primarily the purpose I'm here today is to discuss with this board the possibility of getting funding from you to pay for the costs of those master plan, uh, documents, those studies. Uh, it's estimated that the master plan study for the sewer project alone will run somewhere in the range of a hundred thousand dollars. And the master plan needed to develop and pursue some identified projects for the water distribution system will run an additional fifty thousand dollars. Those are the numbers that have come from our engineering firm uh, in terms to prepare documents that we can use then to pursue the funding. Currently, we have been able to attain funding from the Water Development Commission of the state of Wyoming, uh, which was a sixty percent grant, or actually sixty-seven percent. They paid two-thirds of the cost of the project. The remaining third was a loan from the USDA, uh, of which this, the landowners in the district are repaying that loan over a thirty-year amortization. So we have a substantial burden right now. Phase two of that project was accomplished by a grant and loan combination from, uh, the USDA Rural Development, uh, which was to go in and repair and replace some of the old existing mains, repair some of the dead-end connections, uh, and bring that system up to, uh, a system that can be well-managed and reliable and safe, uh, as well as replacement of some hundred-and-so non-working water meters that we needed to get up and running so that we can appropriately charge for the water that's being used. Um, that was also a grant and loan combination. So, right now, the people or the landowners, the residents of the district are fairly heavily burdened in the costs that they're paying for water service. Um, to kind of put that into perspective, um, the minimum water bill out there for residential connection right now is ninety dollars plus consumption, which is being charged at the rate of approximately a dollar and eighty cents per thousand gallons in excess of fifteen thousand. So those residents are paying, an average home is somewhere in the hundred and five to a hundred and fifteen dollar a month range. I know that personally, my water bill this month's gonna be in excess of two hundred dollars. Of course, I like my lawn too. But the fact is, we have a lot of skin in the game. And when you take your monthly water bill and you add it on top of the annual assessment payment that you're paying to the county's treasurer's office for the retirement of that thirty-year loan, as well as the new loan for the completion of that project, our residents are very much, uh, involved or invested in this system. So, as a result, I don't see that we've got a lot of room that we can impose additional burdens upon them to support the costs of, of pursuing a lot more infrastructure. So it's very hopeful, or my board is very hopeful, that we can rely upon, uh, your, your help, your assistance, as well as Sixth Penny, quite frankly, and based on discussions I'm hearing today, I don't know, but it might be a seventh. In any event, we're gonna have to get creative about funding options that require as little investment on the part of the landowners as possible. Now, as far as the sewer development, the wastewater development in those areas of the Covered Wagon Park and around the golf course, those are gonna fall upon the developers primarily. We're not going to burden the general public with those costs. Uh, we think that that's prudent. We think that that's the way that it's done elsewhere, and that's entirely, uh, the thinking of our board, is that that should be part of their development costs. Um, the cost of developing future systems to collect the wastewater from existing functioning systems and to retire those functioning, uh, septic systems, those costs are going to have to come from funding entities. And my board will be pursuing those possibilities over the next several years, trying to develop some sort of pattern or, or, or map, if you will, to, to get that done. But with that, um, I guess I would open myself up to any questions that, that you might have, that I might be able to help answer at this time.
Thank you, Kel. Any questions for Kel? Go ahead, Commissioner Shanefield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, thank you for this presentation. I appreciate this information. When, um, are you looking at the need for that hundred and then fifty thousand?
We, we would like to begin the process of developing those master plans, obviously as soon as possible. If this, uh, special use tax referendum flies in a year or two, I, I assume we're talking about the next primary election, we would need to be able to start pursuing, um, grant money to develop the collection systems within a couple of years after that. So we're talking about a leeway of, of maybe two or three years or over the next two or three years to be able to put together all of those documents.
Thank you. Further questions, Commissioners?
Yeah, can you get rural development grants? Have you talked to SEDC to see if there are any type of planning grants available?
Uh, we have not. We're still kind of in a normal, gasoline match with the USDA at this time, rural development. We have a current project that is not yet completed. Uh, so once that project's completed and we can close it out, uh, they really don't want to talk to us about any more funding. So, uh, we're, we're gonna have to close that out, and hopefully we will be on good terms when that's completed, but I suspect we will be. Uh, so yes, we will pursue that possibility. They've been a pretty good working partner. Um, but as you all know, the federal government can be kind of difficult to deal with from time to time, uh, especially in light of the COVID situation that we've just experienced. Uh, it has caused a lot of delays, but yes, we will pursue that. We have not been successful in the past in terms of getting grant money to develop, um, master plan studies. The first study that, that this board helped us fund got us over the threshold and got the attention of the Wyoming Water Development Commission, and then they agreed to spend the money to develop the next study that was required, uh, for pre-construction and pre-commitment on their part. So yes, it's something that we could pursue.
And the Wyoming Water Development Company, uh, Commission, would they help you with the master?
Not, not on a master plan. They would not. They only fund, uh, transportation and storage. That's all they fund. Now, as part of that kind of a project, they will fund the engineering, uh, and, and those costs upfront to define what the project's going to be.
Other questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lloyd.
Yeah, um, I really appreciate the update and the information. I actually think, um, development in the, in the, in the Jamestown Real Vista area is almost integral for Green River because it's really the only way to expand out. And I think that's something you have to look at. Um, but, um, but my, you know, I'll be honest, I was loving the presentation, but when he said, hey, funded a hundred thousand dollars, I'll be honest, I had some palpitations in my heart. And the reason is, we just cut significant amounts from our budgets. We cut, um, lots of social service agencies. Some of our own departments took thirty-four percent cuts to be able to get into budget. I personally don't think the budget will be significantly better next year. And so I will tell you, I, this one's tougher maybe because I, I do think economically, there's a lot of positive impact that could come from, um, expansion out in that area. But financially, we are in a, we're in a difficult time. You know, when you, when you look at it, the baseline last year is economically, we had a, a revenue stream of thirty-six million dollars, but we had over forty, what did I figure it was like, forty-five, forty-six million dollars in requests. So I mean, that's the balance of where we're at. And, and then so, um, but there are some other pieces out there that could eventually come into the discussion with some of the, um, the monies out there for infrastructures out there within some of the American Recovery Plan. I'm not a big fan of the American Republic Recovery Plan, but if it's out there, we should take advantage of it and use it, and that could be something. So there's some pieces out there that would be there. But I'm, I, I had, I had to do some thinking because I think there, there's a balance of the growth and development potential of where we're at economically. So that's just where I want to show you where I stood, Kel.
Well, Commissioner, we're, we're fully aware of, of what's going on, on the federal level. Uh, and we're in hopes that if this, if our county receives funds from those folks, that you hopefully will keep us on your radar and consider using some of those funds to help develop, uh, our area out there because you're absolutely right. I see that as the new boundary or the new horizon for the city of Green River. Now, uh, Commissioner Wendley used the A-word a little earlier, and, and you're right. That's a very, that's a very abrasive term. Uh, I prefer the word inclusion. Uh, so, so when, uh, when that, when that time comes, I'm sure we will have to have those discussions with our, with our constituents out there. But they're becoming more and more palatable towards the term inclusion, uh, as long as the proper elements are there.
Good. Commissioner Shanefield.
So with the ARP funds as well, even if it wasn't to come through the county, um, Representative Baker has suggested going and talking to the governor's office to be included in, if they have additional funds. Um, so that may be an avenue for you to reach out, you know, I mean, even in the next couple of weeks and let them know that we have a need and that, um, you know, the commission is obviously supportive. We're just concerned about how, how it's going to be funded and see what their suggestions are as well.
Absolutely. And, and we do have support at the legislative level, and, and we will pursue those, those supporters. Uh, Representative Simpson from Lincoln County, uh, was one of the original engineers in our projects. And so he's intimately familiar with what's going on out there. And, and we will draw on that resource, no question.
Very good. Other questions, Commissioners? Well, thank you, Kel.
Thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate the update. And, uh, through that CARES money and stuff, there are some things that are happening. We just don't know what the sideboards are. I will request that, um, Ms. Marshall will, will have a list for, you know, where this is water sewer and economic development and that type of thing. I'll make sure that we have Jamestown Real Vista on our, on our sites for any of that, if, for when those conversations start so we can include you as well there. I think you've already made the pitch for the Sixth Penny, so when the time's right, we'll, gotta make sure your project is included so that we can have a discussion to see what are the ones we're gonna sponsor to get to the dollar limits we have. So, um, I think they're all well and good and that type of thing, but, uh, never hurts to come and ask.
Well, it doesn't. And I thank you for your time, and we'll keep on, uh, trying to do the best we can with what we've got to do it with, so.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good one and be safe.
You bet. Thanks.
You bet. All right, moving along. Our next, uh, agenda item, Tad Q., which is a Green River, Green Belt Task Force update and master plan update. And here to present that is a former, uh, high school teacher for School District One, Mr. Freeman, former representative for Wyoming, Mr. Freeman. And also, are you the chair for the task, for the belt and chairman of the Green River Task Force? So, good, good morning, good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
If you have any questions that I can't answer.
Mr. Freeman, would you please, as we, um, I've already introduced you, so we're good there. But make sure you, when you introduce your people, have them stand up so we know who they are, that type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Edgar Romero is, um, a fellow task force member, has served for, for many years. And Brad Rainey is the, um, the Parks Director, Director for the, um, city of Green River. Today, I'm just, it's more of an informational, um, presentation to you and with a small ask, and it doesn't have anything to do with money, so, uh, I think I'm safe. In nineteen eighty-one, I believe, it could have been eighty-two, I was, uh, on the right end of a, of a six-to-one vote on whether or not that the city of Green River should have a, a park along the river. Um, I lost that and I was pretty bitter about it, so I waited for nine years, um, and got on the city, uh, Parks Advisory Board. And, um, and during that time, um, Brad's, um, predecessor and I, uh, built up a coalition to, uh, talk about, uh, putting a park along the river. In nineteen ninety, um, between eighty-one and ninety, the, it's kind of a, uh, deja vu. The city and the county didn't have much funds. There was no idea for a new park and that kind of stuff. But nineteen ninety, things started to, to improve, and the city created a task force and made me the chairman of it. Our corporate, um, sponsors, uh, said, we don't want to give any money to, uh, an organization that may tax us. So they told us to become a 501(c)(3), um, organization. And, um, for probably ten years after that, uh, the city of Green River and the, um, the Green Belt Task Force was, was held up as the gold standard for public, uh, private partnerships. Um, in nineteen ninety, we started, um, to put together a master plan. Um, and we had over a hundred people, um, participate. Um, twenty-five of those people, um, broke down in five groups and five people, or, um, of groups of five, and they were given a map of the river through town and said, what would you like to see along, along the, um, uh, the, the river? That was highly enhanced because we went to government agencies and asked, um, that they share their expertise with their personnel and stuff. So we had hydrologists, we had soils people, we had engineers, we had public planners and, and that kind of stuff. So we had a, we had a, an aid crew. Uh, when we, uh, came up with the master plan, we hit the ground running. If you look in your little brochure. If you look in your little brochure on, on the inside page, it has the achievements. And in a short period of time, about five years, we constructed a boat ramp, we developed a Scotts Bottom Nature Area, we put boulders in the, in the, in the river for fish habitat before the last flush with Fontanelle, the river through, through the city was a blue ribbon trout stream, which is very good for tourism. We built the Tronner Bridge to where that we could connect the neighborhoods and the businesses and that, along with railroad viaduct to all the way through the city. We developed historical wildlife and geological interpretive science, we constructed Overlook Park, and we built pathways, we built the U.P. pathway, the Edgewater Pathway Connection, Stratton Myers, Edgewater Park, and one thing that isn't there is Questar. And if you look at the bottom of the page, is, is that you had all the, the organizations that helped us. In that five-year period, we had an increase of value added to the city and parks of about two point two five million dollars. And all of, the only part of that that came from the city was twenty-one percent, and that was primarily in, in kind services, backhoes, personnel and that kind of stuff. The river was a great gift to the city of Green River, but the development along it has made it a regional asset. I worked for forty-three years in, forty-two years in, in Rock Springs and lived in Green River, and it's not uncommon for me to see people I work with on the river all the time. The city's developed other parks, their, their water park and that stuff. And if you go to Expedition Island on the weekends this time of year, you're going to see a constant crowd of between two hundred and three hundred people. And it, it goes all the way down to the Scotts Bottom Nature Area. So you're probably asking, what are we doing now? The task force kind of lulled by itself to sleep, and I wasn't involved with it, so I'm not going to say anything. But there were members of the, of the task force that says it was time to be revitalized and we have to have some sort of focus on going forward. They recruited me for about a year and hopefully that was a good, good recruitment. I had a lot more gumption going at thirty-seven instead of sixty-seven. We've recruited another member, and the first thing that we're going to do is to revitalize our master plan. Our master plan is thirty years old, but it still has relevance. And we benefited from all the expertise that I talked about before. But at the beginning of the year, we had a group of people that would like to have a, a disc golf portion in, in the green belt. Where they wanted to put it had some conflicts, but I think every task force member agreed to it. There's other things that people younger than me that want, and there's other opportunities. We need to make it more accessible to, to our handicap people. We need to have projects to where the, the older folks, the seniors can use it. Just like thirty years ago, the city put in a, a plan to the National Park Service, and I always get this wrong, but it's basically a trails program. And they helped us thirty years ago, and that's another reason why our, our master plan still has relevance. But we met about ten days ago with a landscape architect that will help, help with us. They have an idea, you know, they have great expertise throughout into the communities throughout the country, and they know what other people have done along the rivers to make it more enjoyable and economically viable and touristy and, and that kind of stuff. But they're on board again, and they have the expertise to help us on. We were prepared to go alone. The task force said, put together and sent out a letter that, you know, said that we're going to put together this master plan, we want to have your, your, your help, and I'm sure that several of you have gotten that letter. We're still going to go forward, we're going to revisit the, the calendar, we're going to slow down so that we can take advantage of the, the expertise that the National Park Service grants us. And we'll put together a new calendar, hopefully as, as early as this week, if not by next month. We're really out to recreate the magic that we did thirty years ago. We want to get everybody involved, and that includes the county. When we did the county, or we did this thirty years ago, Bob Gordon and Mark Cott was heavily involved in that, they, they brought a lot of expertise, they knew what was happening in the county, and, and that would be beneficial. We had county commissioners that attended the meetings, not on a regular basis, but they showed up, they cornered me in grocery stores and asked me questions, and that was perfectly enjoyable, that they showed some interest in something that I was. But I guess the ask is, is the community, the county involvement, your staff and, and your own persons. You probably, I know you have, have listened to the communities and, and what they want. We'll have a survey that will be ready pretty soon, if you can send that on your social media to where that we can get input. I think it's imperative that we get input from not only Green River, but places like Jamestown, Rock Springs and that kind of stuff too. And we'll get that to you. So with that, I'm going to, to be quiet and ask any questions that you might have. And Doc, I want you to see that I had a lesson planned and, and I told you what I was going to ask for, and I did exactly what I did.
You did, you did exactly. I was going through the evaluation form and we were on number ten, and that was for feedback from your students and any questions. So up to that point, you got a five star, but let's see what we get for feedback, okay?
All right.
There's any questions for Mr. Freeman? Not at all in the Green Belt. I, I think it's a great thing, what you've done, what the group has done. It's wonderful. Do any of your compadres have anything to add? No.
Help tickets on a tour.
Yeah.
We would love to do that. If you wanted to, we took the, the National Park Service lady on a tour on a bicycle and she had a, a great time. And when we did this thirty years ago, we used to put people in canoes at the county picnic grounds, and we brought them through town, we stopped at different places and stuff like that. I don't know if we had that capability, but we would sure try if somebody says, I want to float it. So, anyway.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaneville?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could you please send meeting information to Sally so that she can disperse it to all of us and we know when your meetings are, where they are, and so we can become a little more involved and educated?
Sure.
Thank you.
Great, thank you for that. Good catch. Anything else, commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you for this.
You take care, be safe.
I will.
And thanks for all your good fights in the past.
Well, thank you. Do you want some advice on getting your digital?
We're always open to good, good, good leadership.
I changed my vote when the newspapers came in and they said, when was the last time X-City updated their, their website? And did they have all the stuff on there? They went over like thirty-five different cities and counties that had not updated their stuff for sometimes up to four years.
Wow.
And, and that's what killed it in the legislature when I was there. So you have an expense if you're going to do Sweetwater now, but the other expenses, you're going to have to have somebody to keep that updated so that the newspaper people can't come up and say they never updated, they don't tell when their, their contracts were coming out or any of that other stuff.
That's good information. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Wow, thanks. You be safe, take care of yourself. Thank you. Right in our own backyards, Green River Belt. Okay, next up is the YDOT State Transportation Information Plan Presented and Local Government Collaboration Meeting. And here to present that is Mr. Thomas.
Actually.
All right, when, when you finish handing out your papers, would you please introduce yourselves? And of course, who you're with, but at least, and anybody that's with you as well, please. Thank you.
Good morning and welcome.
All right. Good afternoon. I am Peter Stinchcomb. I'm the current district construction engineer for YDOT. Troy Thomas, who's acting as our D E, he's also the district main engineer, is extending his Fourth of July festivities, so he's probably on the lake fishing, doing what I'd like to be doing. So, thank you for taking time with us today. It's YDOT's pleasure to be here with you, and we're going to take some time to talk about opportunities that the public, along with our cities, towns, counties, and YDOT have to enhance transportation in the state and communities we live in. Because I, I am Peter Stinchcomb, I am the District Three Construction Engineer for the Wyoming Department of Transportation.
Hold on, the video's not showing up there.
I picked my orange shirt because that's what color we wear on the, maybe, maybe your break foot's going right now, so.
There you go.
You got it.
All right, there we go. The purpose of today's talk is to gather input on the state transportation system, which will include YDOT projects in the area. Today, we want to talk about YDOT funding and trends. We guys already talked about your funding and trends, ours are very similar. The assets we manage, along with some of the challenges facing YDOT, the State Transportation Improvement Program, or the STIP. And I will hand over to some of our district people, which I'll introduce in a little bit, to talk about the local projects in the area. If you live in Rock Springs or, or travel this road like I do every day, you go through a couple of them, so I've been hearing lots of input on that. We hope to learn about local government projects that are being developed and built, hopefully gain some ideas on how we can all work together to improve the transportation system that we all use on a daily basis. The slides, more or less, just giving you kind of what our guiding principles, our purpose, our mission, our values. Support Wyoming's economy while safely connecting communities, our mission. You all have these slides, so I'm going to skim through some of this stuff because I know a lot of you hear it every single year, but I'll hit the definite important parts. Our goals are to ensure a vibrant, safe and competent workforce, acquire and reasonably manage our resources, provide safe, reliable, effective transportation systems, provide essential public and safety services and effective communication systems, and create enhanced partnerships with transportation stakeholders, encourage and support innovation, and preserve our history and heritage. Our guiding principles are more or less a kind of way to, they're, they're, that's how I make the step. It's kind of our principles on what we use to put together the step and, and move forward with our projects and our goals. These are the priority order on how we make our budgetary and financial decisions. So a wide auto, a quick wide out overview, we have a lot of roads, that's our, one of our main functions. Now, you can see six, sixty-seven hundred miles of roads, six thousand bridges, that includes things like the large culverts, retaining walls and other things like that. We also have culverts, a lot of them, lots of guard rail to keep accidents from becoming too, too bad, I guess. And then eighty thousand signs and lots of fence to also take care of. We have very many different divisions, we have engineering and planning in Cheyenne, construction crews in each of our districts, pretty much in every county as well, maintenance crews out there doing plowing and fixing potholes and the minor, not necessarily the minor work, but the other work behind the scenes, our equipment. We have lots of vehicles that we have to, for all the people that we have working for us, including our plows, traffic and I T S, our facilities, emergency communications, which is Wild Link, we're expanding that a little bit, and twenty-four hour transportation management center and a, and a road condition website. We also have patrol, you know, you have our troopers, our port of entry, dispatch, and aeronautics, we even take care of that too, with an engineering, construction section, planning, air service development, and unmanned aerial systems. We also take care of driver services, compliance and investigation, motor vehicles, and we support other various programs. So YDOT isn't just highways, we have a lot of it, a little bit to do with everything, I guess. This is a quick thing, I'm sure you've all seen kind of the similar trends. The blue lines are more or less the money that we get each year, that's kind of plateaued out, and the yellow line is our buying power. You guys probably see the same thing, now there's that little spike from last year, that's due to COVID money and stimulus money. So, and the same thing with the two thousand eight spike, when that happened as well. Unfunded operations, you can take a look at a lot of these. This is more or less operations that we have that don't have funds. It's just kind of to give you an idea, I'm sure you guys see the same things, I heard a little bit earlier about, you know, your budget requests and versus what you actually have, it's kind of the same thing, so. Delayed construction projects, another list, cool thing about this is there's nothing in District Three or in Sweetwater County, which I'm happy to say we don't have any delayed projects. Some of these ones are just giant projects, like die twenty-five, I eighty interchange, that needs to be redone someday, but we don't have the money to do it. Extra YDOT funds, if we, if we were to get additional funding, we would address our unfunded needs, more projects to maintain, move forward with some of those delayed projects, and update our fleet equipment and facilities. STIP process, that's more or less what I'm here to talk to you about today. We're starting to gather our STIP inputs, that's where we kind of get with our counties and, and cities and whatnot, and try to gather, you know, input on what maybe I should be putting in the STIP, or where I should be putting projects, or if we want to team up and do something together collaboratively. So we have our inputs, then we have candidate projects. Candidate projects come from, we have management systems, we have a pavement management system that tells us, you know, the section of roads in worse condition than the next. We have bridge management systems that says, you need to work on this bridge now versus four years from now. You know, sometimes you're wondering why this bridge is being left alone when the other one's getting fixed. Our management systems are helping, help putting our dollar in the best spot. We will get to those other ones, hopefully, but that's what the management systems are. Then we gather public inputs, I'll get to that at the end of the, end of this, there's various different ways, this will be online, so we can gather some more public input. We also take your guys' input anytime. Then we have our transportation commission, they approve our STIP in September, and then October, our final STIP is published. Keep that in mind though, our STIP changes every year. We have a project that may come in higher than we thought, or maybe we can't get all the resources for that project, so we got to move it back here to, it's a very fluid thing. Every year, I got to change various projects. This is the project STIP map, this is online, you can go around, and this tells you where all our little projects are. Reds to twenty-twenty-one, you know, greens twenty-twenty-three, kind of shows you that we have work going on all around the state and where. Reds to 2021, you know, greens 2023, kind of shows you that we have work going on all around the state and where. Trying to keep up with myself. Highway project process. The planning phase, the STIP development, we develop our STIP. We do recon, we survey, and then we take, we take out public input at this point on our, on individual projects. Then we get into the design. We issue various different, different plans. We have engineering studies done if need be, and then we get through the final plans and specs. And we do public meetings whenever we feel, not when we feel, but when they're necessary or needed to inform the public that, of what's going on. And then we have our contract phase, which is what you see out on the highway right now, where they're actually boots on the ground building the projects. This is just another quick thing that shows you about how many projects we have every year on the purple line, how much money we're spending every year. It's staying pretty consistent across the board, though our buying power is down. STIP, what is in the document? So if you go online and you pull up our STIP, which is probably the best way to get to it. We have copies if you need some, or I can always get some to you. But going online and getting them. We have various highway projects, transit projects, all the different types. This is just for an example. It's going to show you the county, show you the roads and what, you know, what projects are out there and. This is just another representation of the same thing. Again, it's just an example. They'll show you the projects, the cost. I'm just kind of give you the, the various details of what is going on on our STIP. Another example, this one basically takes year by year, showing you how much we're spending in which county. You can go to every different county on this. I know this is big horn here, but like I said, just example. So the District Three STIP, I'm going to ask Brad McColl back here. He's going to come and help with describing some of his projects and the way else. He's one of our resident engineers in Rock Springs. The other one is Clint Lockman. He was out taking care of business on a project this morning, so he wasn't able to make it. We'll kind of go through various projects that are going on now and ones coming up in the coming years. And then we can get to the comments. So. And Brad took over for me about a year ago, so most of these projects are my fault, so. All right, so first couple, I'm going to go through this first page real quick. Rock Springs East, eastbound lanes, that's the other side of Rock Springs. That, where you can tell that we've taken all the asphalt up and we've turned it all into concrete on that side of Rock Springs. Pretty cool project. We did that mainly because the asphalt was in such bad shape that we had to do something. And at the time, concrete was a little bit better of an option because of its life. The Better Creek section is getting ready to start right now. If it hasn't already started. It's just a little bit further out towards, towards Patrick Draw and whatnot. Also another mill and overlay job, a little bit of bridge work. Rock Springs North up on 191, a mill and overlay job. That one will be done by Mountain Construction. It's a simple mill and overlay. In our minds, it's simple. It's just taking off an inch or two of asphalt, putting two or three back. And then interchange road, the big one that, right there outside of Rock Springs. It's going to be great in my mind for us Green River people. We can get off and go to Home Depot very easily now. And I also think it will develop the Blairtown roadside a little bit more to get some of those empty warehouses filling back up again. Because the road from that interchange road will go all the way over the railroad to Blairtown Road. That one's going to take a year or two, though. And then we have some isolated locations. The biggest one everybody knows about and that I get most phone calls about is that little bridge just before town that backs traffic up all the way to here. So that one will hopefully be done in a few more weeks, then we can get back traffic flowing again, so. All right, on to 2022.
All right, so these are just going through a bunch of future projects here, or they're going to be down the pipe. The first one is our Wyoming 372. It's just south of the Wyoming 28 Junction. And it's just going to be a quick level overlay chip seal job. Looks like we have a couple interstate projects out west by Little American and Granger. It will be pretty much the same thing, mill overlay and some bridge rehab type work. We have one here in Green River that is just a signal upgrade type scenario on River UU Monroe.
Yeah, but that one is, all the signals going up the hill there is, we're going to upgrade those signals to all new equipment, all new electrical, and we'll fix the ADA in those particular locations. We're hoping to also fix there at Monroe, maybe not fix it, but line it up a little bit better. I know we have some problems with crossing and pedestrian stuff there, so we're going to hopefully going to fix a little bit of that. 2023, Granger Junction West. It's another interstate project from mile marker 57 to 65. A relay with some wearing course, a little bit of bridge rehab. That's kind of our standard interstate project type work.
Um, let's see here, 2024, we have Pointer Rocks East Section. We're just going to do the eastbound side. We're typically splitting these westbound, eastbound lanes up just for funding and, and that type of thing. So this one's here just west of, or east of Pointer Rocks. We have a Green River, Utah line north, so we redo, well, just overlay that one and redo the work down there. So we got 191 Flaming Gorge Road, basically at the state line there too, it looks like.
A quick little thing about the Pointer Rocks job. That was the section that really blew up a few years ago. I don't know if you remember. It was almost like playing Frogger. You're dodging all the holes as you're driving through there. So we're getting out there and getting it done. When that really happened, we had to push that project up. 2025, this is where it gets more fluid. These projects are here, but they may not be here two years from now. Like I may have to move them up or move them back. It's depending on what's going on. So we got Patrick Draw. 143 to 154, mill and overlay, bridge rehabs, Rock Springs to Rollins. That one is the westbound lanes. That's the Patrick Draw also, or no. 130 to 138 Pointer Rocks job. That's the other side of that Pointer Rocks job. Green River to Utah, Green River South. That's from here in town, the two point, the mile marker two is right up there. It's top of the hill there by the transfer station and it's going all the way up the hill. So we're hoping to get out there and mill overlay that before long. And then Granger to Green River, another I-80 job. That one though is in concrete section. It looks like so we'll probably be out there grinding and smoothing it out. That's more kind of maintenance style work.
We're out to 2026, another Wyoming 530 job, the Squaw Hollow section, which is, if you've been down there and you've driven and there's a bunch of ripples right there, that's that section there. Just a mill overlay and probably address that, that problem area there. And then we'll have the other half of our, our Patrick Draw section out by the rest areas.
2027, I have a couple of things here. And that's probably, that's the, this is the last year of our STIP currently. Rock Springs to Rollins, another I-80 job. It's one from 153 to 162. Then we have Farsen County Line South. So that's from the Sweetwater, Salt Lake County line coming south, mill and overlay out there. Then Wamp Sutter, westbound. Out there near Wamp Sutter, on the westbound side, coming this direction. On this side of Wamp Sutter, I should say, another mill overlay. Green River Bridge. Yeah, that's, I think, I believe that's the big one going over. We're going to help fix that thing. There was some stuff underneath. There's nothing a lot, a lot to fix on the surface. That might be a project you won't see, but some underneath stuff that we need to take care of. And then I think everybody saw last year that drives over it a lot. The expansion joints come out a lot, so we're going to hopefully fix those too. Then we have Rock Springs South. Also US 191 going south. That's more near the border there. And then the Jamestown Service Road, we hope to get to that sooner than later. It's in not the greatest shape, but there's not a lot we can do at the moment. I'm getting in, hopefully they'll get out there and mill and overlay that job. Then this gray box here, these are a bunch of projects that I've had all my residents put together and these are just the local area ones. Stimulus projects. We're working to get, you know, several projects on the shelf. These are examples, not examples, these are the four in Sweetwater County that we're trying to get on the shelf as soon as possible. Just in case the federal government decides they want to give us some stimulus money to get projects going. Thanks, Brad. All right, so our next steps, our local governments, contact YDOT to learn about opportunities for funding, construction partnerships, supply purchases. We can always, can always get in on with, with us if you want. Help make things a little bit cheaper if we buy in bulk. There's a virtual state meeting, which is basically a lot like this, like these slides here. You can give comments on that virtual STIP meeting. That's actually a really good way. Then it goes to Stephanie here. And she takes care of letting me know every comment that everybody has given and, from anybody. And then provide you feedback on upcoming projects and developments. The list of names here, we got Tom DeHaaf and Mark Challett and Keith Fulton. That's our executive staff in Cheyenne. You got Tori, who's the interim district engineer here in, in Rock Springs. You can also get ahold of me for construction or Darren here, for Darren Kaufman here for traffic stuff. Yeah. And then the best, if you ever want to get in on funding discussions and what kind of funding is available from like the federal government and whatnot. Sarah James Ellis in Cheyenne is like expert level when it comes to that. So generally when county's asking me about getting certain types of funding, I'm like, let's go talk to Sarah. So she's, she works her magic when it comes to that stuff, so. Starting July 26th, we have the virtual STIP meeting up online. This is a great place to provide feedback. Down there in that black box in the bottom is the website for the YDOT STIP meeting. That's a great place. It has an interactive map that you can place comments on and, and give us your feedback on just about anything going on in the STIP. So hopefully I didn't talk too fast and hopefully I got all the information out. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Questions, commissioners, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything at all? I got one.
Yeah.
Just easy, it's an easy one. I just, I think it's been recently, maybe last year, year and a half, that the city of Green River has been talking with YDOT with reference to coming through right out here in front, Flaming Gorge Way, I believe it is.
Yeah.
Have, where, is that even in the conversations yet or is on the list to have conversations?
I know the city has done like a development plan, but where they've got a lot of stuff that they would like to incorporate into it. We've talked with them. There's, we don't have a project set up yet. I think the biggest thing there is funding. And with YDOT, we know we need to get down here and do something down here. A lot of problems though with, it's a lot of what was, we deal with in Green River in general is ADA stuff. It's really hard to do when all these hills are, are here. So no, we have talked with, with Pete on that stuff. And, and the, the city engineers and they showed us their plan. Clint Lockman, who's not here, who like said, is out dealing with project stuff. He's been very involved in it, so he, we, we've had our hand in it. We just, I don't think there's anything official yet.
The whole project basically goes from getting off the interstate on the west end all the way to getting on the interstate east end, right?
Yeah. Yeah, when we had our urban systems meeting with the city of Green River earlier this year, I know we talked. It was brought up at that time because that was when Baker's plan to make the road between towns was first coming to light. We were discussing that, how, how much that money for something like that would go towards an actual project like this through town. So I know we're talking about it, but.
Well, if there's any way that we can assist you or Green River to get those conversations moved forward to where what your plans being made, because I mean, it, it, it benefits these people that live in this community. And, and we also know that what happens if there's a traffic shutdown
Oh, yeah.
on the west end of Peru Hill or something, or the tunnels.
Yeah.
I guess the tunnels.
The tunnels, yeah.
And where's traffic diverted?
Yep, right down the ID business loop.
Yeah, and not that, it's not a good plan, but we, we do need to assist these people over here to at least get streets and stuff for their.
Clint and I have been.
Safety and that type of thing.
Clint Lockman and I have been discussing, doing some intermediate stuff in between now and, and maybe incorporating a city's plan, which would be like slab replacements down here in town, just to get the bad stuff. So we have talked about and stuff.
Okay, but let us know so we can help them move that from talking to action from end to end.
Will do. I agree.
Okay, I know you do, but.
I live over here as well.
I gotta, I gotta bring that one up because that's, that's huge for this community. Then the STIP plans, do they deal with overpasses, wildlife overpasses as well? Do you guys with the STIP plan?
If the project incorporates STIP plans, yeah, we have the Dry Piney project going on right now, which is, that's in the STIP. The funding for a lot of the wildlife overpasses, we've been trying to get, you know, nearly fanatics and all that, the NGOs and whatnot involved. And we've also, the license, the new license plate that has, that's, that's pretty much what that was for, stuff like that, for conservation. Yes, it's, it's up on my priority list for sure. I build them on every project in Teton County. I'm very proud of the one that they're in Dry Piney because I grew up there. And I know we, we look at them on every project now and whether we need to do something with the wildlife or not, so.
The need, the need for them is many.
Yeah.
The ability to get it done is few. And I think you guys are know probably running the same problem as we do. You probably have a lot of good projects, but you just don't have the funding available to get them done and, and to meet the needs of what each of us independently see as important. But based on the STIP plan that you presently have moving forward and that type of thing. We appreciate what you do for Sweetwater County and, and, and as well as, you know, whether it's the interstate or state highways or working conjunctually. But anyhow, we, we really appreciate what you do and I know sometimes we can be a little bit forceful on our requests from the standpoint of it's not happening fast enough. I guess the means aren't there as we're all finding out, so. Those are only my, those were my questions, so I'll stand quiet now.
All right.
Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, with that, thank you. Great report. We appreciate it and you guys stay safe out there.
Yeah, you too. Thank you, thank you very much. Get all of us anytime.
All right, you got it. Have a good one. Moving forward on our agenda, next up with a approval of a tax anticipation advancement. I'm going to use that word instead of what's there, but they have loan, but county doesn't do loans. So we're going to change it to the word advancement. Here with us is Candy Pendleton and Candy is representing and I believe the events complex.
I am, thank you.
Good morning.
I didn't know if you'd recognize me with the blonde hair, so that's really good.
Sitting there, who is that new gal?
Right.
Way to go.
I know you guys have had a very long day. I have been watching this morning, so we'll make this quick. I have been watching this morning, so we'll make this quick. Each year we come to you about this time of year for a tax anticipation. It's actually sort of a line of credit that we do. You know that our funding comes in in May and November, and so we get a tax anticipation agreement with Commerce Bank typically to borrow if we need to for our operational expenses until the money comes in in November. So in your packet is the warrant agreement and the letter from Commerce Bank. Commerce Bank does us very well and they offer a very low interest rate. There are a lot of years we don't end up using this line of credit because we don't need it, but it's easier to get it now and make sure all of our ducks are in a row in case we do need it. And then we can borrow up until November 1st. After that, we are not allowed to borrow anymore, and it has to be paid off by June of next year using the funds that we get from the mill levy. So we can borrow up to 75% of the loan, and there's a requirement for you all to sign and the county clerk to sign, and I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Candy. Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lloyd.
Where's Larry? I know he's retiring, but sooner or later, he's going to have to, you know, if I would have seen you guys in a meeting last week, I'd question if he was still around.
He is still around. Yes, I agree. I'll send him over next time. We had a discussion this morning about who was coming. So next time I'll tell him you have requested him personally.
Even if he shows up on Zoom.
Okay. I will pass that along.
Tell him I miss him.
Right.
You probably say that's the reason I'm not going.
We would love to send him your direction. Trust me.
Well, we'd rather have you present, but we still like him.
You know, I think, anything else, Commissioner Lloyd?
No, I, I, we've, we've supported this in the past, and I don't see any reason to look at it differently this year from my perspective.
The one thing I heard that I really appreciate that you just said is we don't take it if we need it, and we don't take all of it.
Correct.
And I hadn't heard that in the past before. I thought it was, hey, here's an advancement.
Oh, okay.
And for an advancement, we go get it and no, you don't. And I appreciate hearing that. That's, that's good information.
Absolutely. I will tell you that typically we get it in small amounts. So when we go to reach payroll at the end of a cycle or when we're finishing up fair, those types of things, we typically get 150 or 200,000 at a time when we need it. And typically only do that two or three times. So as low as possible.
Very good. No trouble paying it back.
No trouble paying it back.
Very good. Thank you. Other questions, commissioners?
That's why she came and not Larry.
I love it. I love it. Yeah. All right, commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding this warrant agreement on this loan advancement for the events complex and authorizing the chairman to sign?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
I would make that motion.
We have a motion to approve the warrant and authorize the chairman to sign. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner Toman.
One of us all seconded.
Thank you. We have a second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, make sure the minutes reflect that it's a cash advancement, not a loan, please. Thank you. All right, with that, commissioners, I think that brings us to the dubious end of our agenda for today, other than or for action items, other than other. So, and then executive session. So commissioners, anything for other?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
I'd like just permission to maybe look and maybe second meeting of August to restart looking at some strategic planning. I think after coming out of budget session, we really have some great directions we could start moving. And I'd like to start relooking at getting back into that and really getting into some specific details of where we want to go as an organization in the county.
Very good. So you'd like to begin special meetings following the regular meeting for strategic planning?
Yeah, and I was thinking maybe the second meeting in August that
To start, okay.
Because I, then I know we're also going to start looking at some budgetary stuff. So I think it kind of goes into that hand in hand.
Very good. That works well. Does anybody disagree? Nobody does? Okay, Commissioner Shanefield.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And I would like input on how the commission would like to move forward with six penny planning with this new initiative going on. I can send an email out as well to the rest of the group. We actually were intending on meeting beginning of July to go over projects and what their needs were. But I'm not sure if me, if we should, if we should keep on the rate we're going, or if we should take a pause until this initiative gets going. So I'd love everybody's input.
Okay, well, I'll start out with input and I'll say, I'd like to hear from the outside people, outside agencies first. That's where I'm at. I, because it's really for the most part, when we do a special purpose tax referendum, it's the majority of it meets the outside cities and towns needs more so than just the county. But again, too, my only comment is it's kind of like kicking the can down the road. It's some of their infrastructure needs are, are in dire need right now. Kick it down the road further, it may be worse, you know, but we can't, and maybe it's, we relook at, at where we set the dollar amount and that type of thing. So I'd like to hear what the other entities have to say, please.
And it wasn't, I wasn't, I guess, asking if we should put a pause on the project as a whole. I was just waiting to see if we should give everybody a couple of months to get the ground running with this other initiative.
Whatever they want to do.
Sounds good.
That's me.
You know, my thoughts, I guess, is it might be good just to bring them all in. Lauren, I think during our intergovernmental meetings, talking about the, 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 what we passed today regarding public safety and and the economic development tax. I think that everyone's intention in that group was to continue moving forward with six penny for an election next year.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, I guess I can't, gotta quit calling it six penny. It has to become the 1% tax, which is really truly what it is.
By, by statute, it's special purpose tax.
Yeah, and the 1%. So yes, I think we have to go that way. So.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Mr. Toman? Head on means head on. Okay. Find out more. Very good. Thank you. Okay, anything else for other? I'm going to bring misery down on all of us. I'd like at the next meeting to start looking at our budget because I do know, talking with Dave Devis, he does have numbers, quarterly numbers that are stable to start looking at what the trend is going. What I'd like to see us do is invite, when we do our budgets, of course, personnel is a big part of it. So that would be Mr. McLean in HR, who could come in and basically give us over several years, an estimate pretty close to what we can expect. The second thing I'd like to do under operations, I think Bonnie Berry does a lot of that work, and she can delve into that and has a pretty good handle on what's being spent and how the operations work. And she could put together a six, seven year average and tell us pretty close to what we have. So out of that, we would have those two areas of expenses with Dave Devis letting us know where our revenue is. We could easily take our revenue and subtract those two areas, and that'll leave us say, I'll just reference this as a can of dollars of what we have left from our revenue. And from that standpoint, will give us a good idea of what we have to run a balanced budget tied into the idea that we adopted from Bonnie with regard to meeting that budget. But I think it's important for us to know is how much money are we going to have to share that? Then also moving forward from that, whatever comes out of that area, because then I'll have some, some ideas out of that, that for us all to work on to bring back regarding budget. But I think it's important to start it in July, since that's a time which we have numbers and invite all of our funding agencies so they can follow along on that part of the agenda and then continue on and work through the hard details. And I think one of those things coming up is when we know what's left over and what we know is ahead, what's important to us and what we want to fund. So that's what I would, as your chairman, like to begin to start at the end of July for our, for our second meeting in July, if everybody's in agreement.
Absolutely.
Okay, and I think that might help, help you guys a little bit with strategic planning too, Commissioner Lloyd.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, I wonder if maybe you and I should have a conversation in the next couple of weeks and see if some of that stuff can just become hand in hand as we meet with organizations.
You know, past experiences with strategic planning and other organizations, Commissioner, as well as budgets, they do go hand in hand. So that can happen easily. Okay. Commissioner Toman, your thoughts moving forward with the budget?
Good. I'm just trying to get it on my calendar here.
No, we'll do it at the regular meeting. It'll be a, it'll be agenda item. Okay, sounds good. Okay, so Ashley, I know you work in HR, so let Gary know, please. And also let Bonnie know, Clerk Lane, and we'll go from there. Gary's been sharing a lot of that with us, so he'll know where we're going. All right, anything else under other commissioners for future? Anything for the good of the order? After today, I'd fire the chairman. He kind of stuttered a little bit. So anyhow, with that, we do have under executive session, we do have real estate contracts, legal, and then also personnel and pre-decisional. And that's with the EIS from the Pacific Atlantic Throne of Mine. So I don't know if there'll be any action coming out of executive session, but if there is, we'll take action immediately following it. So with that, I would entertain a motion for us to go into executive session.
That's a move.
So moved by Commissioner Shanefield. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Let's take a short break.
Thank you.
10 minute, Roy, or longer?
10 is fine. I was going to make a motion that we take